We begin here.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to a regular meeting of the Newark Zoning Board of Adjustment. Today's date is Thursday, April twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. The purpose of this of this meeting is to hear requests for variances from the Newark Zoning and Land Use Regulations, under the authority of the Municipal Land Use Law. If you're an applicant for a D or U variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special reasons for the grant of the variance exist and that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning plan of the city of Newark. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you require an affirmative vote of five members of the seven-member Board of Adjustment. Other variances require a majority of four votes to grant the variance. Excuse me, you should also be aware. Uh, I'm sorry. If you are an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within forty-five days of notice of the decision of the board, and that court may overturn this board's decision. If you're an objector at any type of variance and the variance is granted, you too may appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within forty-five days of the decision of this board. If you do file an appeal of the board's decision, we ask that in addition to complying with any notice required by statute or court rule, that you serve a copy of your pleadings on the zoning board secretary. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by notifying the Star Ledger, the Jersey Journal, the Newark City Club, and posting a copy on the bulletin board in the basement of Newark City Hall. In addition to adequate notice under the Open Public Meetings Act, electronic notice of this remote public meeting was placed on the city of Newark's website as permitted by NJSA, well, state statute. Members of the public may notify the host that you would like to ask questions or make statements by using the raised hand feature at the bottom of the computer screen or your mobile device. Uh, if you are calling on the telephone, you can notify us by pressing star nine on your telephone. This, uh, the board is a quasi judicial board, and if appeals are taken from a board decision, we must provide a copy of the official transcript to the Superior Court. The chat is not part of the official transcript. We want to make sure that your questions, the answers to your questions, and any statements or comments you have are correctly recorded in the official transcript. So I'd ask that you refrain from using the chat. Um, in addition, when you use the chat, it pops up on the screen. It's disruptive and it's what would be like speaking out loud, out of turn, if we were meeting in person. So I'd ask you to refrain from using the chat. The meeting of the Board of Adjustment will now come to order. Madam Secretary, will you please call the law?
Member Hardisty.
Present.
Member Comasanyas.
Present.
Member Jones.
Present.
Member Rivera.
Present.
Member Colbian.
Present.
Basha Mumford.
President.
Sheriff.
Present. Are there any requests for adjournments or postponements? Requests for adjournments or postponements? If so, please use the raised hand feature at the bottom of the screen. I see none. Call the first case, please.
The time is now six fifteen P M. The first item on tonight's agenda is Z B A dash twenty-four dash sixteen, located at two eighty-two First Avenue, block one thousand nine hundred sixty-five, lot fifty-four in the north ward. The applicant is Susan Beza. In the R two zone, the applicant proposes four residential units above an existing community center. Applicant is seeking a D one use and D five for insufficient lot area per dwelling. See variances for insufficient lot size, insufficient lot width, exceeding maximum front yard setback, insufficient rear yard setback, exceeding maximum impervious lot coverage, insufficient ground floor height, insufficient ground floor facade transparency, insufficient building facade transparency times three, insufficient onsite tree, and insufficient off-street parking. Site plan approval is required. This application was adjourned to this date from the February sixth hearing.
Counsel, uh, Kitchens, are all the members of your team in?
Um, I see our architect, we're still waiting for Ali Keshari or Kreshi and, uh, John McDonough, I just see him, and the applicant herself, Susan Beza.
Is Michelle G, screen name Michelle G, on your team? I see.
No, they're not. Don't see the architect just yet. Oh, there he is.
Is Susan Beza on your team?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, screen name Michelle G, can you turn your camera on and mute yourself?
Yes, hi.
Hi, are, uh, you're not part of applicant's team, are you?
No, I think I made a mistake.
Okay, are you an objector on this matter?
Yes.
Okay, you're an objector. Um, I'd ask all other persons who are objectors on this matter to raise your hand. Um, so we can identify you, capture you. Uh, the Board of Adjustment made the following findings of fact with respect to this property. It's located in Newark's Upper Roseville neighborhood on the southeastern corner of the intersection of First Avenue and North Ten Street. To the east and south of the subject site are detached two-family dwellings and the Newark School Stadium. Other surrounding land uses consist of an elementary school, a low-rise multifamily dwelling, and a strip of retail establishments. The total site area is approximately two thousand seven hundred and fifty-five square feet. I'd ask the objectors to keep their hands raised. I see, I thought I saw four raised hands. I see three raised hands. Let the record reflect. Oh, Mr. Screen name Luis Mison Nave. Are you an objector on this matter, sir? You're muted.
That's correct, and I'm objective.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let the record reflect there are four objectors on this matter. Um, counsel, your appearance, please.
Good evening. My name is Calla Ketchens. I am an attorney at Satter Law Group. We represent the applicant Susan Beza.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, I saw a hand raised by Mr. McDon, I mean, I'm sorry, not Mr. McDonough, Mr. Traficante.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Traficante, did you have a matter that requires us to come to you first?
Oh, yes, it's concerning this application. We got it late. We have not had a chance to go through this application and prepare a report to the board. So. For the record.
We, we did turn in the updated or the revised engineering plans, um, less than ten days prior to the, uh, here.
Yeah, I think on the fifteenth. So. Yeah, we don't want, we didn't have time. We just did it. What's worth.
Anyone want to proceed, counsel?
Oh, I believe that our engineer, uh, Mr. Khan, uh, he could speak to this if he was able to, uh, get in touch with Mr. Traficante prior to the hearing to discuss. But the revised plans do address, uh, an email from Mr. Traficante that was sent, uh, back in August, uh, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And they addressed the water memo that we've received in December, um, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Mr. Traficante, how, how, how would you like to proceed?
I recommend it be adjourned. He can write all the letters he wants. If you don't give up my office the time to review these new plans, it's unreasonable to expect us to provide a decent and thorough report to the board in a timely manner. All right, now granted, he may have addressed most, maybe all, or some of my comments in my email to, to the applicant back in August of last year. Again, my office, people, there's planning board meetings every week for the next five weeks, in addition to all the three zoning boards. If I don't get it, at least ten days in advance, and that's cutting it close. There's no way my office can turn around and review in such a short period of time. It just doesn't make sense. So I know we can ask any other divisions or departments if they had the opportunity, or is it just engineering? You got comments from the planner and from the department of water and sewer? Don't know. But I'm wondering if they ran into the same dilemma my office did. Too little, too late. So, for what it's worth. Again, especially if you got objectors, I would think it'd be prudent, but hey, all right, that's just my thinking, you know? But I would think it'd be, makes sense to push this back. But hey, I leave it to the applicant and the board.
Counsel?
I, I would like to proceed. We will be addressing, uh, in our testimony, the comments from the original reports, um, to that you, uh, Mr. Traficante, the planner, and the water department provided.
But we never provided reports at board. We never.
But you, you provided a, uh, you, you provided.
The email's not a report. The email just listed things that were deemed missing from the initial application. So, you know, not to mix the two, but, you know, you're talking apples and oranges.
Right, uh, counsel, you said that this was submitted. This wasn't submitted within the ten-day requirement. Is that correct?
The revised engineering plans, correct.
Yeah. Um, I would, um, I would urge the board to, uh, proceed with this if the, if, if the plans were timely submitted. Um, I have, uh, I think because they weren't, Mr. Traficante raises a fair objection. Let's second call this. I'm going to ask our counsel to, um, take a quick look at this. Let's second call this, okay, counsel?
Right.
Uh, let's call the next case, please. Mr. Blatter, could you, uh, take a look at this matter? Let's call the next case in the meantime.
The time is now six twenty-four P M. The next item on tonight's agenda is Z B A dash twenty-five dash eleven, located at forty-nine Vincent Street, block two thousand four hundred eighty, lot twenty-five in the east ward. The applicant is Maria Calijema Mendoza. In the R three zone, the applicant proposes alterations and in addition to existing single family to convert into a two-family. Applicant is seeking C variances for insufficient lot size, insufficient side yard setback, exceeding maximum lot coverage by building, exceeding maximum impervious lot coverage, insufficient building facade transparency, and insufficient lot width. Site plan approval is not required.
The Board of Adjustment made the following findings of fact with respect to this property. It's located on the northwestern corner of the intersection of Vincent and Horatio Streets. The lot area is approximately one thousand four hundred and twenty square feet. The surrounding land uses consist of detached two-and-a-half-story dwellings. Um, counsel. Gabriel Perez, is your entire team in, counsel?
Um, I see our applicant, Ms. Palermo. And yep, that is it. We are here.
Great, this is this is application Z B A dash twenty-five dash eleven, forty-nine Vincent Street. Um, are there any objectors on this application? If you're an objector on this application, please raise your hand. I see no raised hands. Counsel, your parents?
Good evening, Jennifer Corillo Perez of Connel Foley on behalf of Maria Mendoza, who's the owner of forty-nine Vincent.
Counsel?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, as indicated by the board secretary, this property is located within the R three residential zone. Uh, the applicant is before you this evening on an application for interior alterations and in addition to that existing single-story, I mean, two-story, single-family dwelling. The applicant has owned this home since two thousand and seventeen and lives in that one-family home with her four children. Two of the youngest, which are eleven, the two youngest who are eleven-year-old twin boys are special needs, one of which is diagnosed with cerebral palsy and is immobile and requires accommodations to the home to allow for this additional space for the treatment and therapeutic recommendations that were given by his medical team and social worker to increase his quality of life. So the application before you this evening is simply to allow for this addition, for that additional space to accommodate this family's needs. Um, the, uh, conversion to a two-family is permitted under the zone. Um, and in connection with the application, we have some C variances that were noted by the board secretary. Um, we do not have site plan, uh, that is being required with this application, and we've received the report from your board planner and will address the questions that were raised therein. Um, and we'll certainly, uh, agree to work with the city with any of the conditions that were noted in his report as well. Uh, we did submit to this board, uh, an affidavit of notice, uh, providing a jurisdiction to proceed this evening, uh, that's consistent with the state statute and city ordinances, and have one witness to present, um, the application, Ms. Jennifer Palermo, who is our project architect.
Um, are you going to call Ms. Palermo first?
Yes.
Uh, just want to raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Ms. Palermo?
I think she's muted, Ms. Palermo.
You're muted.
I do, sorry.
Thank you, counsel.
Ms. Palermo.
Well, Ms. Palermo, uh, although we haven't seen you of late, uh, is your, uh, architectural license in the state of New Jersey in full force and effect?
Yes, sir.
Well, don't stay away so long. Will, Ms. Palermo is well-known to this board. We'll accept her as an expert in the field of architecture, counsel.
Thank you so much. Ms. Palermo, your office prepared the plans that were submitted as part of this application, correct?
Correct.
All right, and if you can, please walk the board through the proposed, uh, floor plan, the addition, and what we're seeking today with respect to the relief that's being sought.
Certainly. We'll go to the cover sheet.
Uh, it still has not, okay, there we go. And so, Ms. Palermo, you're relying on the plans that were submitted, so we will not be marking these as exhibits, correct?
That's correct. They have not changed.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we have a property located on the corner of Horatio Street and Vincent Street. Uh, it is an end, it is at the end of a row of homes. Um, we are seeking variances for minimum lot size, uh, where twenty-five hundred is required. We are providing fourteen hundred and twenty. It's an existing, uh, non-conforming, uh, condition. Uh, our minimum lot width is twenty-five feet. Our lot is twenty. Uh, also, uh, not existing non-conforming condition. Um, in service of the, uh, requirements, programmatic requirements of the, this alteration to this particular property, um, we exceed our maximum building lot coverage, um, at eighty-one percent, when fifty percent is required, and we are, um, exceeding our maximum impervious lot coverage. Um, eighty-four is proposed and sixty is, uh, required. So you'll notice the difference between our, our building lot coverage and our, uh, impervious lot coverage is only a difference of three percent, and that, um, speaks to the fact that, uh, really, uh, the majority of the lot coverage is taken up by building. So we are proposing two units. Uh, the ground floor and second floor is, uh, a single five-bedroom unit that will be occupied by our owner, and the third floor will be a three-bedroom unit, um, that will be occupied, um, accordingly. So for the site plan, here, here you'll see the outline of the existing building. Um, and then therefore this hatched area here is what we are proposing to add to the building. Um, the first floor of this, uh, unit or this house is, uh, slightly above grade by a couple of feet. Um, so, uh, you'll see in the plan where it's a little, uh, interesting in terms of, uh, differences of level. We are proposing a one-car garage access from Horatio Street. Go through and go right to the plans. So our proposed first-floor plan, you can see here the outline of the existing, uh, single-family dwelling. Uh, we are proposing our garage, which will be accessed from grade level, obviously, since it's a car. Um, and then this is actually going to be the main entrance to the, um, to the ground floor unit. Uh, you enter in through this door, and then we have a ramp up to, uh, that heightened level that I had just explained, um, over the existing, uh, single-family home. And then you go up internal stairs to the second floor where you have three additional bedrooms, um, two bathrooms, and, uh, a kitchen, living and dining. And on the, the third floor, we have a self-contained, uh, three-bedroom unit. Elevationally, we have, you can see here that our first floor level is, uh, is up here. So we have, we have an existing stoop that will remain. Um, and then we are essentially having the garage down at street level, and then we have, uh, two stories above. Ooh. I think these are just some photographs of the existing neighborhood. Um, you can see that three stories is typical. Um, and this is the existing, uh, single-family home down here in the right-hand corner.
Ms. Palermo, just to clarify, um, this is an existing two-story, and we are adding a third story, so it'll be a three-story building, correct? All right, and the, the units are divided into two, so the ground floor and the second floor will be one unit, and that's the unit that will be occupied by Ms. Mendoza. And that's the approximately, can you provide the square footage of that?
Uh, hold on a second. I believe it's about twenty-three hundred square feet from both floors. Um, there is also an existing basement.
Okay.
Going to remain. Uh, and then the, the upper, the third floor unit is, uh, eleven hundred and twenty-six square feet.
Great, okay. And if you can provide, just, uh, if you can go back to the elevations and just provide the board with an overview of the materials that are going to be utilized at the exterior of the property place?
Certainly. We have, uh, hardy plank, uh, panels and, uh, and vinyl siding, and we have, uh, brick, iron spot smooth or equivalent on the ground floor.
And Ms. Palermo, you received the planning's report dated April twenty-first, correct?
Yes.
And with respect to the planning comments and the conditions recommended, recommended conditions of approval, specifically the one noted regarding the installation of a mirror at the garage door to safely facilitate entry and exit, we have no objections, um, to installing that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and just noting that the, the variances that are, lot size, lot width, um, are pre-existing conditions, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I have no additional questions for Ms. Palermo.
Thank you. Are there questions for the architect from the board? Questions for the architect from the board? Commissioner, go ahead, sign us.
This question, the, the ramp design from the inside as opposed to steps, is that just for being able to move the wheelchairs or something? Is that like a handicap access thing?
Yes, a little tight to be able to have both a steps and a ramp.
Okay, thank you.
And, and commissioners, I indicated both children are special needs, um, one of them being immobile, and so it's necessary in order for her to gain to, to, uh, to get them into the home.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the architect? Do you have other witnesses that you plan to call?
We do not. Unless there are specific questions for the owner.
I have, I have some questions for the owner.
Perfect, um, her, she doesn't speak English, but her daughter Shelley is on, and she can serve as a translator.
Um, are there questions from the public for, uh, the architect? So please raise your hands. Ms. Juma.
Camera on or not? Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Ms. Juma, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony about to provide the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Sure, I do. However, I only have a question or two questions. Um, Ms. Palermo, there's an existing, is there an existing fence, um, around the property today? And if so, will it be?
No, I, I'm not sure, but we are proposing a new fence around the backyard.
A conforming fence?
Ye- yes.
Okay, uh, will you revise your plans to show that?
Sure.
And then my last question is regarding the basement. You mentioned there's an existing basement. Are there any windows, um, in that basement area?
I don't believe so. Where, I think the plan is to, uh, use it as storage. So you can see, oh, yeah, I'm not sharing my screen. I'm looking at it myself. There are no windows.
Okay.
And it, and it will not be a full basement. The basement will only remain under the existing, uh, the existing home. We are not going to have, uh, continue the basement under the new addition.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the architect? And, and, and counsel, um, something I never do, but you've noted several times that, um, uh, the family, um, cares for two special need children. Are any of those children going to be living in the new second?
No.
Or if?
No, um, no, chairman, the, the family will be occupying the ground level and the special needs children, obviously, they'll tend to that. Um, the new unit will be for rental.
Okay. Um, Ms. Palermo, is there anything you can do to increase or to decrease the, um, the impervious coverage?
So, uh, the only way to do that would be to make the building smaller because we don't re, we have nothing in the backyard that is impervious. It's all impervious.
If there's nothing further, uh, do, members of the public have any questions? Well, I'll, I'll, I'll let you close, counsel. I just, uh, I guess I'm a bit concerned about increasing this use on such a small lot. Um, if you're ready to close, I'll ask you to do so.
No, absolutely, and I want to thank everyone for their time. Um, the applicant here is requesting relief for, um, to convert his, their existing one family into two, which is permitted under the zone. It's a pre-existing lot. Uh, the lot size is something that's not, not within their control. This is an existing non-conformity, both the, the lot size and the lot width. Um, the purpose of the relief that's being sought, uh, simply is for need and intent. Um, it's definitely a benefit to the family to certainly, uh, assist them. They've occupied that home. It's definitely a benefit to the family to certainly assist them, they've occupied that home since twenty seventeen. The, as indicated by the testimony provided by Ms. Palermo, the lot is already covered. And the percentage is high by virtue of the lot being smaller than what is already required. And so the variances, we believe. Will not cause any substantial detriment here, they do not impair the intent or purpose of zoning, the lot size is what it is. And we think that the relief that's being requested. And the deviations from those requirements, uh, the benefits here outweigh it by virtue of what it is. And we don't think by virtue of granting this application that there'll be any damage to the character of the neighborhood. Or any detriment whatsoever, and so we submit that this application should be approved. With the variance relief that's being requested, thank you.
Thank you, we're now in discussion, may I have discussion from the board? Commissioner Rivera.
I feel like this is fairly straightforward since this is a corner property. They're not asking for too much, they're just trying to accommodate some of their needs. The owners are gonna live in the property, so. That's always a plus. Uh, wish the family the best, uh, I will be in favor of this application.
Thank you, Commissioner Comisanes.
I share your concerns, chairman, I'm looking at the aerial view of the neighborhood and there's only like two backyards with grass in the entire block. And that's sad, but that's a condition caused by the way these lots were divided up. Before any of us were born, right? I, I don't think what they're asking is out of the norm for the character of this neighborhood. So I, I'd be in favor of this application.
Thank you, are there any further comments from the board? Further comments from the board? If none, may I have a motion, please? Commissioner Rivera.
Motion to. There's somebody else that may want to say something.
Did I miss someone?
Maybe somebody's mic unmuted by mistake. Motion to approve ZBA dash twenty five dash eleven located at forty nine Benson Street. We didn't put any conditions, correct?
Uh, we have a motion for approval review, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Jones, call the board, please.
Member Hardisty.
Yes.
Member Comisanes.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Rivera.
Yes.
Member Klobien.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mumford.
Yes, congratulations, your application is approved, call the next case, please.
The time is now six forty four P M, the next item on tonight's agenda is ZBA dash twenty five dash O three located at four forty five South Ninth Street. Two hundred eighty nine lot twenty six in the central ward, the applicant is Brick City Development LLC. In the C two zone, the applicant proposes new construction of a two family dwelling with a car garage. Applicant is seeking C variances for insufficient lot size, insufficient lot width. Exceeding maximum front yard setback, insufficient rear yard setback, exceeding maximum lot coverage by building, exceeding maximum pervious lot coverage. Site plan approval is not required.
The board of adjust made the following findings of fact with respect to this property. It's located in Newark's Iron Brown neighborhood. On the northwestern corner of the intersection of Adams and Delanceys, no, I'm reading the wrong one. The board of adjustment, the following findings of fact. With respect to four four five South Ninth Street. It's located in Newark's West Side neighborhood. On the western side of South Ninth Street, between fifteenth and sixteenth avenues. The lot is, that area is approximately two thousand two hundred and forty five square feet. The surrounding land uses consist of primarily two and a half to three story detached dwellings. Counsel, is your entire team in?
I see Mr. Fernandez and Mr. McDonough, yes.
Uh, other, uh, this is application ZBA dash twenty five dash O three. Four four five South Ninth Street. Are there any objectors on this application? If so, please identify yourself by raising your hand, you could do so by putting your, using the raise hand feature. At the bottom of your computer screen or mobile device, if you're on the phone, you can alert us by pressing start. I ask you to do so now. I see no raised hands, cancel your appearance for the record, please.
Name Jennifer Carillo Perez of Connel Foley on behalf of Brick City Development LLC.
Counsel.
Uh, good evening again, Jennifer Carillo Perez, and the applicant is before you this evening, seeking variance relief for the development of a new three story two family dwelling with a garage on the existing vacant lot. Um, we do have two witnesses who will be presenting today in support of the application. Mr. George Fernandez was our project architect as well as Mr. John McDonough, who will be providing a planning testimony. The authorized representative of Brick City is here should questions arise. Before we proceed, I'd like to just note for the record that an affidavit of notice was also submitted to the board secretary. Uh, demonstrating adequate notice to proceed this evening. Uh, as it relates to this application, we are in receipt of one report, the planner's report dated April twenty first, twenty twenty five. And our professionals will stipulate during testimony that we will certainly work to satisfy. And address all of these conditions and revisions that are noted in that report. So if I can, I, I'd like to call Mr. George Fernandez to be sworn in, please.
Mr. McDonough is always last. You're raising your right hand, uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, your address and relationship to this application, please.
Jorge Fernandez, F E R N A N D E S, rest architect, business address seventy five Parkhurst Street, Newark, New Jersey.
Ms. Fernandez, uh, is your architectural license in the state of New Jersey in full force and effect?
Yes, it is.
Uh, Ms. Fernandez is well known to this board, will accept him as an expert in the area of architecture, counsel.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fernandez. You prepared the plans, your office prepared the plans that were submitted with this application, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, and if you can through share screen, please walk the board through the proposed project. Also noting that the plans that are being shared were submitted as part of this application, so we will not be marking them as an exhibit, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll start with the site plan, page S one. Uh, here we have the proposed, uh, the existing site. As it is today, it's a irregular parcel. It's twenty four point seventy nine feet in width. And we have ninety seven point forty two feet in the northern property line. In length and a hundred feet in the southern property line. Uh, we're fronting South Ninth Street and even the, uh, the front of this, of this property as an, as an irregular line. Uh, so what we're doing here is. Constructing, proposing to construct a three story, two family house. We're trying to comply. As best you can to the requirements of the zoning ordinance, of course, uh, we, we need to request a variance for the lot size. That is, uh, on a C two zone, uh, you have to have twenty five hundred square feet and we are shy of that. Uh, but we still managed to get a. House that is eighteen foot, ten inches in width and fifty nine foot, six inches in depth. Uh, the lot width. Uh, allows us to have a, uh, a four foot, four inch side yard on the northern property line. And then a zero foot, foot side yard on the, uh, southern property line. We.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fernandez, just when you noted that the side yard setback you indicated is zero, there is a comment in the planner's report with respect to a variance relief that's. That's sought with respect to that setback.
Correct, I, I didn't notice that, but, uh, there, I believe the zoning ordinance says that we're allowed to go to zero feet. Or, or in other words, on the property line, as long as there's no neighboring structures. Uh, there are three feet or less to that property line. And, uh, as you can see for our site plan here, we don't, we don't really have another structure there. Uh, it's except for the, this rear corner here, and that's at three, more than three feet, it's at actually four point twenty nine feet. To the, to that structure, so, uh, where I, I don't believe that creates a variance.
Thank you so much, proceed.
So the, uh, we have the, the house here with a garage, a tan, in tandem, two cars in tandem. And of course, the entrance into the, uh, into the house from the front. I can share the A one floor plans. Where we have the floor plan. We have, again, the two car garage, the two entrances, one to each house, uh, one to each apartment. Uh, we have a recreation area in the rear. That has a side door. And also a door from inside, within the garage. And this area is meant to be used as a recreation for the, uh, for the, for the tenants of the, of this house. And we're not showing a, uh, a bathroom down there. As it, it is only to be used for, for recreation purposes. Uh, we also have a closet or mechanicals, uh, for the second floor apartment. The second floor, which is accessible through the front door on the, on the right. Where you go up a set of stairs and you're in that apartment where you have three bedrooms, uh, kitchen, living room. And the laundry closet on the second floor, you also have two bathrooms. Uh, the largest bedroom, a hundred fifty nine square feet and the smaller bedrooms are ninety nine square feet. Then we have a third floor where we have the similar plan, three bedroom, kitchen, living and the laundry closet. The front elevation is here on the page A two and, uh, we have a, uh. We tried to implement a lot of, uh, windows to, to comply with the glazing requirements. Uh, we have, uh, sliding Juliet balconies with sliding doors. We have transoms on the third floor and we have glass on our garage door as well. The materials are brick and stucco. Yeah, in other words, the brick is on the garage level as well as on the, uh, entrance door, uh, level. And then we have a stucco finish on the, uh, second and third floor, a living room area. Uh, the sides are vinyl siding, a- again, we are complying with the glazing requirements. Uh, we have, uh, two windows on each bedroom and then we have windows for, for the recreation space. In the, in the first floor. Uh, the rear, also we have three windows for the bedroom in the rear. And the four windows for the rec space in the. In, in the first floor and of course, the, the side that's on the property line cannot have windows as, uh, for code reasons. Uh, that pretty much concludes the testimony for this house and I'm open for any questions.
Counsel, any further questions for this witness?
Um, Mr. Mr. Fernandez, you're not aware of any easements or any restrictions on the property as it is, correct?
Uh, I'm not aware.
Okay, thank you, I have no additional questions for Mr. Fernandez.
Ms. Juma.
And not a gentleman zoning officer, I have a question for the architect. Uh, Mr. Fernandez, what is the date of these plans? They're slightly different from what was uploaded and shared. Uh, with the board.
Uh, plans are. I have ten thirty one twenty twenty four.
Um, so the changes are minor with the layout to the ground floor and first floor and even the third floor in terms of where the closets are. Can you provide this version to the secretary?
Sure.
The version that's uploaded doesn't include the clean floor plan, site plan or elevation.
Okay.
I think that was a question, was that a question, Ms. Juma?
Um, it was initially a question that he answered, um, with the date, I don't know if. If it was revised for the purpose of the hearing, but if so, I asked that he provide us with the copy.
Uh, we'll provide it.
This, um, this, this could become a problem, Mr. Fernandez, as you well know, Mr. Hazel. You're muted.
I just wanted to, uh, just to follow.
Be sworn in, Mr. Hazel? Uh, do you swear from the testimony about to provide be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Um, I just wanted to confirm.
State your name and title, please.
Gerard Hazel, board planner. I just wanted to confirm, uh, what, uh, Mr. Fernandez had stated before about the side yard requirement not being required. Um, he is correct in his, uh, uh, you know, what his determination of that. I just was not aware of the distance, it was not, uh, clear to me at the time, the distance from the neighboring property, but. If it is four, uh, feet twenty nine, it is more than three feet, so it would not require a variance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for the architect? Commissioner Rivera.
A question, uh. If you had three inches in front of it there and, uh, three feet in the back, would you even be before us? Uh, I see the lot is almost twenty five by one, one hundred is on one side, right, it's ninety seven.
Correct, if this was twenty five hundred square feet, we would not be before you.
Wow, well, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is, I'm sorry for interrupting, this is not a gentleman zoning officer speaking, there are other variances associated with this application, so yes, they would be.
I see, thank you.
If I can clarify, there are a few variants.
Ms. Carillo Perez speaking.
Yes, I'm sorry, Jennifer Carillo Perez, uh, yes, Ms. Juma is correct. Uh, while the lot sizes and the lot width are two of the variances, we do have a, a rear yard setback and coverage. Uh, that warrant us to come before this board.
Thank you for agreeing. Are there any other questions for the architect? Other questions for the architect, Mr. Fernandez.
Uh, I don't have a question, but I have a statement, ten days, please. Sure.
In the future, right, thank you.
Uh, I thank you so much, I have no additional questions for Mr. Fernandez, I'd like to call Mr. McDonough.
Ms. McDonough, please raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about to provide be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name, uh, uh, your address and relationship to this application, please.
My name is John McDonough, my address is one zero one Gibraltar Drive in Parsippany, New Jersey, and I am the project planner.
Mrs. McDonough, is your, uh, uh, planning license in the state of New Jersey in full force and effect?
It is.
Uh, Mr. McDonough is well known to this board, will accept him as an expert in the field of planning, I will note, you're looking kind of gray there, mister.
It's, it's bad lighting.
Oh, I see, I, I have that same problem, counsel.
No comment, um, thank you, Mr. McDonough, uh, you've had an opportunity to review the application. That was submitted, um, and hear the testimony this evening, correct?
Correct.
And you are familiar with the city of Newark ordinances and the master plan, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, can you please provide an overview with respect to the relief that's being sought from a planning perspective, specifically the variances that are being requested this evening?
Yes, uh, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to start off as I always do with a little exhibit here for the board. This is a new device, so anything could happen now as I hit the share button. Can you see a map of the subject site?
Yes.
And I'd like to mark this as exhibit A one, please.
But I'm sure Mr. McDonough provided this to us well within the ten day time rate, isn't that true, Mr. McDonough?
I will say I provided it before the hearing, Mr. Chairman, they will be there ten days prior next time.
Um, so Mark, A one.
A one for the record is going to show you the subject property outlined in yellow on sheet number one. Um, we're here in the C two zone, we're dealing with a permitted use, it's a two family district. Uh, this is a proposed two family development. We are in a two family neighborhood, all of these surrounding dwellings are two families, including. Uh, two families on similarly sized lots, um, as Commissioner, uh, Rivera.
Um, as Commissioner, uh, Ribero, Ribero said, um, this is close to conformance in terms of the overall lot size. And I think if the lot size did conform, the lot width conformed, some of those other bulk deviations that you're seeing would otherwise not be required here. Um, it is somewhat of an, somewhat of an odd-shaped lot. And you get a sense of that here when you look at sheet number two of A one. This is what the property looked like today. It is a vacant piece of property. Um, it is, the proposal here will fully conform, but for the fact that we have this undersized lot, uh, which is short by a mere one point eight feet in terms of the overall lot width. We're at twenty-three point one-two feet. We're twenty-five is the minimum that's required. Likewise, we have a lot area that is ninety percent conforming. Um, we're, we're at two, twenty-two, forty-five square feet. We're twenty-five hundred square feet would be the minimum that's required. If we flip this view to the reverse side and look at the property, uh, from the back, you can see in the foreground, we've got two dwellings that are also on undersized lots. Um, giving credence to the fact that this neighborhood can accommodate two failing, two family dwellings on lots that are less than twenty-five hundred square feet. I agree with Mr. Fernandez, um, and, uh, Mr. Hazel, that relief is not required uh, for the setback, which would run along this fence line that I'm tracing. Uh, that building adjacent is offset by more than three feet, so relief is not related, uh, needed in that regard. To the extent that relief is needed for coverage and needed for setback, we're looking at an otherwise ordinary structure in the landscape, so this is clearly a case where relief relates to the land and not the building per se. That's a textbook hardship under the land use law. We call it the C one criteria, uh, whereby relief relates to practical difficulty, practical difficulties with the land, not with the building per se. Uh, so based on that and based on everything Mr. Fernandez has given you in terms of the design, all relief can be granted here without any substantially adverse impacts to the public, um, or to the zone plan. And with that, I would offer that the criteria are met and approval is warranted.
Thank you. Are there questions for the planner from the board? Questions for the planner from the board? Mr. McDonough, um, do you know if this lot was created as a result of a? Well, do you know how this lot was created? Was it a subdivision, you know?
I don't know, Mr. Chairman. I know it's a lawfully plotted lot. It's a, it's a legal lot. I don't know if it was carved out. I know there are some smaller twenty-five hundred square foot lots in the, in the neighborhood. That may have been a result of the new zoning, but I'm honestly not sure.
Thank you. Uh, other questions for the planner from the board? Other questions for, and I apologize for the planner or the architect from the public? If so, please use the raise hand feature. At the bottom, there's your screen. Uh, if you're on the telephone, you can press star nine. I'd ask you to do so now. I see no raised hands. Counsel.
Thank you. I do not have any additional witnesses.
Are there any members of the public who would care to make a statement at this time? If so, once again, please use the raise hand feature. I see none. Counsel?
Uh, thank you for, again, for your attention this evening. Um, I think, as noted by our planner, um, the case law supports the relief that's being, uh, requested. Um, the project itself is, the, the lot size is de minimis, and the relief that's being really requested is minor and is consistent with what is in the neighborhood. And so for the reasons that were stated on the record, as well as the documents that were submitted as part of this application, we respectfully request the support and approval of this application.
Thank you. Um, we're now in discussion. We have discussion from the board, please. Commissioner Komi Sanz.
This seems pretty straightforward. Uh, what they're asking for is minimal. I'd be in favor of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Koby.
I agree. It's pretty straightforward. I'm also in support of this application.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Other comments from the board? Hearing none. We have a motion, please.
Motion to approve ZBA twenty-five dash zero three four four five South Ninth Street.
Motion, Komi Sanz, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Koby, on call the roll, please.
Member Komi Sanz.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Rivera.
Yes.
Member Hardisty.
Yes.
Member Kovian.
Yes.
Byshire Mumford. Cheryl Font.
Yes. Uh, congratulations. Your application is approved. Counsel?
Thank you.
Ten days.
Understood. And, uh, believe me when I, I echo that sentiment.
Um, we're gonna take, uh, a brief uh, uh, pause here. Let's take a five-minute break. We'll be back at, um, in five minutes.
Recording stopped.
Thank you.
Sorry for taking um six extra minutes if folks could come back please. Let's call the next case please.
Recording in progress.
You're muted?
Oh no, I'm catching on. The time is now. Time is now seven seventeen P M. The next item on tonight's agenda is Z B A dash twenty four dash sixty one located at three twenty three dash three twenty nine Adams Street. Block nine hundred fifty four lot thirty four in the east ward. The applicant is one O six Delancey L L C. In the M X one zone, the applicant proposes the construction of a six story mid rise multifamily building with forty nine residential units and twenty five parking spaces. Applicant is seeking a D one use variance to permit a mid rise residential dwelling. A D five variance for a sufficient lot area per dwelling. See variances for exceeding maximum lock coverage by building exceeding maximum pervious lock coverage. And sufficient building facade transparency insufficient active ground floor required. Insufficient onsite tree and sufficient off street parking site plan approval is required.
Did you say insufficient onsite tree this man?
Um yeah.
Ah okay, um council is your entire team in?
Um Mister McDonough, I see Dave Robinson, yes, uh Max Sackler. Um I'm just looking and Adnan Khan, yes, I believe Max, yes, everyone's on.
This is application Z B A dash twenty four dash sixty one, three twenty three, three twenty nine Adams Streets. Are there any objectors on this application? Uh if there are any objectors, please identify yourselves by using the raise hand feature at the bottom of your computer screen or your mobile device. If you're on the telephone, you can alert us to your presence by pressing star nine. I ask you to do so now, please. I see no raised hands, counsel.
Jennifer Corillo Perez of Conal Foley on behalf of one O six Delancey L L C.
Thank you, counsel.
Um good evening, um I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Uh as indicated by your board secretary, this property is located within the M X one low density residential and commercial zone. And we are before you this evening on an application for preliminary final site plan approval to construct a new six story residential building with forty nine dwelling units and park twenty five parking spaces specifically and parking spaces specifically. The project will contain um ground floor parking with lobby space, stairwell, mailroom, et cetera, with the residential units to be located on the second through the sixth floor as well as an amenity space on the roof. In connection there too, we are seeking a D one use variance, D five. And six variances were listed, however, uh we did revise the plans, submit them within. We did it uh within the timeframe permitted, so not more, not less than ten days prior to this hearing. And we did eliminate the tree variance. So um we you will hear through the testimony this evening uh from our professionals, Mister Adnan Khan, our civil engineer. We do have Matthew Sackler, who's our traffic engineer. Mister Dave Robinson will provide architectural uh testimony and walk you through those plans. And the professional planner, Mister McDonough, will provide the planning testimony with respect to the relief that's being requested. We also have a representative from one O six Delancey should questions arise um from either the board or the public this evening. Um we did submit to your board secretary a affidavit of notice for this hearing as well, allowing us to proceed this evening. And we have received from the city a planners report dated April eighteenth twenty twenty five. A memorandum from the Department of Engineering dated April twenty second twenty twenty five. And a memorandum from the Division of Traffic and Signal dated April twenty third twenty twenty five. Um I note that we did not receive a memorandum from the Department of Water and Sewer Utilities. However, our applicant did meet with that division of water and sewer utilities and has agreed to work with them to address any comments they may have. Um and so uh with that, I'd just like to note that our profession will certainly stipulate during their testimony that we will work to satisfy and address their concerns and the conditions noted therein and will provide the testimony they've requested this evening.
Counsel, um a question as um would your applicant agree um to accept all conditions set forth in the memorandum from the Department of Engineering as a condition of approval?
I believe yes.
Is that a yes or?
Yes, that is a yes.
Okay, and um even though you haven't received a uh a memo from Water and Sewer, uh would would your applicant agree as a condition of approval to comply with any conditions that they impose? Or if there's something that you feel you can't agree with, you can certainly come back to this board. Is that something your your applicant will agree to, counsel?
Yes, we will.
Thank you, um and forgive me, I forgot to read the findings of fact into the record. Uh this the Board of Adjustment, the filing find these in fact with respect to this property. It's located in Newark's Ironbound neighborhood on the northwestern corner of the intersection of Adams and Delancey Street. The lot area is approximately nine thousand four hundred and seventy eight point five two square feet. The surrounding land uses consist of detached dwellings, a paved lot and a seafood processing facility and store. Counsel?
Mister Adnan Khan, please, from A W C Engineering.
Mister Khan, uh could you swear affirm the testimony about to provide you the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, your address and relationship to this application, please.
Uh Adnan Khan, one fifty River Road, Montville, New Jersey. I'm the project engineer for this project.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mister Khan, can you please provide the board the benefit of your educational background and the status of your license, please?
Uh sure, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, masters in construction management from N G I T. Appeared in front of this board pretty much regularly now. Uh testified in front of federal court, superior court, hundreds of courts.
And I'm sorry, uh Mister my counsel, uh Mister Khan's well known to this board. He's already said his license and engineering license in the state of New Jersey is in full force and effect. Uh will uh I I will uh acknowledge him as an expert in the field of engineering, thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Uh Mister Khan, your office prepared the plans that we submitted as part of this application, correct?
Uh that is correct, yes.
Yes, and you also participated in a T R C meeting uh with the city as well, correct?
Uh correct.
Great, if you can, please walk the board um through the proposed site plan with starting with existing conditions of the site, please.
Uh sure. Okay, as uh you heard, like the project is located, uh it's a corner lot located at the intersection of Delancy and Adams Street. Uh it's a little uh a little over ninety four hundred square feet. Uh currently it consists of a few structures, asphalt paved area uh and uh dwellings and concrete structures. So as part of this project, and again, there are some encroachments currently uh within the public right of way. But as part of this project, all the structures will be demolished, including all the encroachments within the right of way. They will be taken out, uh and uh the plan is to construct a six story forty nine unit uh uh up uh unit residential apartment building. Uh the the layout, the way it works is like we are proposing for twenty five parking spaces in ground parking spa uh on ground parking spaces. The project also qualifies for E V stations or E V charging facilities. Uh we are proposing E V stations uh as well based on the requirement. And we are proposing handicap parking space when accessible handicap handicap parking spaces. So the ground floor consists of uh oh one other thing, it's a mixed use with a small residential component on the ground floor as well. Uh a small retail, retail, commercial component on the ground floor. So yeah, and the parking is around that uh uh retail uh store that uh will be proposed at the intersection. The circulation for the property is from Adams Street. We are providing a twenty foot curb cut uh for a two way access coming in and out of uh uh actually uh or from Delancy as well as there is a uh sorry Adams. And there is also a curb cut on Delancy Street, which is also full service uh two way in and out uh parking. Uh so technically the parking is like a in a loop, like you can come in from Adams or Delancy and circulate around the parking area uh to park. Uh there are tandem parking spaces that we are proposing, uh four of them. So uh four means eight total, but for tandem locations, uh they are also part of the overall twenty five parking spaces. Also proposed are shade trees, so we are proposing four shade trees along Adams Street and four shade trees along Delancy Street. Uh we are also proposing some shrubs, green shrub along the facade in front of the facade along the intersection. Uh uh I in front of the building as well as a small section uh further north of uh uh for the south, I mean the south of the uh driveway on uh Adams Street. And then we have a li- a little bit larger uh shrub area towards the western corner of the property. So overall, I believe we are proposing about twenty four shrubs and eight shade trees as part of this project. Uh let's see. Also, as part of the stormwater management, we are proposing an underground pipe detention system uh which will collect all the roof runoff from the exist uh from the proposed structure and direct the water into the drive into the uh system, stormwater system, which will be connected to the uh city's uh combined sewer system on uh Adams Street. Also, new utilities are proposed uh for this project, electric, gas and water. And as Miss Perez mentioned, that the applicant had a meeting with the Water and Sewer Department. And uh seems like there are, if there will be any comments, we'll be more than happy to work with the Water and Sewer Department to address those comments, but I don't see any issues as far as not addressing any comments that they may have. Also, um let's see, this is. Okay, we are also proposing uh lighting improvements. Uh we have concealed uh or ceiling mounted light fixtures uh in the parking area. They are all L E D type light fixtures, uh meet the requirements as well as we have uh light fixtures along the facade of both Delancy Street and Adams Street. Uh the fixture is like typical downward throw full cutoff fixture uh along the facade. And I believe I might have a picture for uh ceiling mounted, but they are all L E D light type fixtures. Uh and the facade fixtures are all, as I mentioned, are kind of fully cut off and downward throw. And we are meeting.
Requirement, correct, Mister Khan, there are some comments that were noted in the planners and the engineers report. And you can just say we'll agree to comply with the city's departments of engineering's comments, correct?
Uh yes, we have, actually, these plans have already, almost eighty percent of these uh comments are already addressed. But any remaining comments we will address, correct?
Thank you.
Uh what else I have, okay, and then the rest of the my sheets are pretty much uh the detail sheets. But that's pretty much in the nutshell, the site uh engineering that is proposed for this project. And of course, like as required in any project in Newark, we are proposing new sidewalk and curbs along the uh property frontage uh as required, and as I mentioned earlier, we are removing all the all or any existing encroachment within the right of way.
Thank you, uh I do have a additional question just for confirmation from the engineering's report. You did have an opportunity to review that, correct?
That is correct.
We indicated the during your testimony, the driveway access aisle is two way and there are two curb cuts into the street, correct? On two different streets, one on Adams and one down to Delancey?
Correct.
All right, and the uh engineering report noted that there are the widths of those are are approximately twenty three or twenty three twenty three point four or tw- or twenty three point five feet in width, is that correct, is that your understanding?
The dry aisle inside, yes, the inside is twenty three point five. Yeah, but the curb cut itself is a twenty feet as required.
Correct, but the dry aisle, I apologize, while it's required to be twenty, we are providing twenty three uh point five approximately, correct?
That is correct.
But that is a waiver request that we're being, we're going to pursue, and they had no objection to that, correct?
That is correct.
Um I think there is another comment that the applicant will re stripe all of the spaces necessary to provide for the parking space with within the parking uh the parking area, is that your understanding?
Yes.
Uh additionally, agree to indicate the electric vehicle charging spaces in the plan um and that we will agree to comply with the A D A requirements, correct?
That is correct.
Um lastly, Mister Khan, I just wanted to clarify, um in addition to the parking and the lighting, uh the applicant in this case will be providing and installing cameras within uh the parking area of the uh of the building, is that is that your understanding?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay, so there will be cameras located within the parking area as well as uh surrounding the building, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I have no additional questions for Mister Khan.
Mister Traficante.
Yes, sir.
Mister Traficante, do you swear affirm testimony about to provide you the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and title for the record.
I am Mister Charles Traficanti, I am a principal engineer, I am in the employment of the city of Newark Department of Engineering. I am also a professional engineer, my license is acting in good standing at State Board.
Thank you.
Mister Khan.
Yes, sir.
For the record, during the technical review meeting, I believe was discussed and it was conditioned that the exit driveway to Delancey Street would be a right turn only in, right turn only out, is that correct?
Uh that was discussed, yes, and if the board wishes, uh we we will comply with that.
All right, well, that's I believe that was condition noted, so yeah.
Were you asking for that condition, Mister? Mister Traficante, are you recommending, I should say that?
I'm recommending, but I thought it was already a given.
Well, apparently it's not, but your request is noted. You would like uh the exit on Delancey Street to be a right turn only.
In and out, yes. Right.
Please continue.
You also mentioned that any existing encroaching structure will be removed. Does that include the two walls that are referenced on page two of the engineers report to the board dated April twenty second? On page two, item two, survey number two and three. All right, the existing wall that approaches into the right way for Adams Street and likewise an existing wall that approaches the public right way for Delancey Street, are both of those encroachments to be removed?
That is correct.
All right, all right, and I see you're proposing eight trees, I mean, yeah, we love trees, right?
Don't always love trees, uh uh you are questionable in that regard, Mister.
All right, well, I think he's got two more than he needs, and if that's the case, he may need.
You know what? Then we celebrate that, you have any other questions, Mister Traficante?
Uh again, as long as it does it. Would you be willing to meet with the city arborist department of engineering to see if any of those streets can be moved so they don't obstruct line of sights?
Yeah, we will.
All right, no further questions, thank you.
Mister Traficante, um do you have concerns about? Uh I think there's an entrance on Adams Street, isn't that correct?
Yep, that's a left turn only because it's one way traffic, so you're gonna have the same problem on Adams as you're gonna have on Delancey. People trying to make a left out of Adams is gonna have to only want to do shade trees in their path. Likewise, people making a right out of Delancey and have same problem.
So are you asking for a condition on the on the Adams Street side, if so, why?
But that be left turn only or that they don't put trees in the lines of sight?
Yeah, uh uh you know what, yeah, enough with the trees, left turn only on.
Left turn only, yes, it's gotta be, it's left turn, it's one way traffic, northbound.
Um what about the um? I didn't hear Mister Khan talk about um any audio or visual notifications for cars going in or coming out, are you gonna have that installed, Mister Khan?
Yeah, we can, we can add that uh at both the driveways, yes.
Anything further, Mister Traficante? Anything further except for trees, Mister?
No, sir, that that's all of it.
Thank you. Um counsel, as a condition of approval, would your applicant agree to um right turn only in and out of the Delancey Street um entrance to the building?
Yes.
And um would your applicant also agree to install audio and visual systems to alert um pedestrians of cars entering or exiting uh both driveways into the bu- and out of the building?
Yes.
Thank you, any any further questions for the engineer from the board? Questions for the engineer from the board? Hearing none, counsel. Oh, other questions from the public for the engineer? Questions from members of the public for the engineer? Counsel?
Great, thank you, I'd like to call, uh I have no further questions for this witness, I'd like to call our project uh the traffic study actually, uh Mister Matthew Sackler, our traffic engineer.
Sackler, raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony about to provide you the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, um are you asking for a parking variance on this?
It we are, there is a parking variance.
All right, thank you. Counsel?
Great, Mister Sackler, can you please provide the ben- the board the benefit of your educational background and the status of your license, please, for qualification?
Yes, uh again, my name is Matthew Sackler, I'm with Stonefield Engineering Design. Uh I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and my license is still valid and current. I have been appeared before this board on numerous occasions as a traffic engineer uh on uh similar projects to this.
And you indicated your license is current and in good standing, correct?
That is correct.
Um I'd like to submit Mister Sackler as an engineer's limited testimony for the traffic study that was submitted as part of this application.
Uh Mister Sackler is well known to this board, we'll accept him as an expert in the field of traffic engineering. And counsel, right before we get into that, um can we call uh counsel Ketchens back, please?
Oh sure, we can, no problem.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Counsel Ketchens? Can you turn on your um video and unmute yourself? Well, counsel Ketchens, when you can turn on your video and mute yourself, do so. And I'll 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 try and notice that you're here, let's proceed, uh counsel, counsel, please.
Okay, thank you, I apologize, uh yes, Matthews, okay, perfect, I think you just forgive me, qualified him, correct?
Yes.
Perfect, he's it's been accepted, I you're muted, Mister Sackler. Uh if you can, your office did prepare a report that was submitted to the city uh dated April eleventh twenty twenty five, correct?
That is correct.
Right, can you please provide the board with an overview of your parking study?
Absolutely, uh and as part of this parking study, we uh undertook a number of uh activities. Absolutely. Uh, and as part of this parking study, we, uh, undertook a number of, uh, activities. Um, one, we obviously observed the area, drove around the area, walked the area. Um, another item we did is we looked at transportation routes, routes in the area. We did an on-street parking study, which I'll describe later on. We also looked at census data as well as, um, ITE, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, trip generation and parking generation data. Uh, you know, the industry standard, uh, publications to determine what we'd expect in terms of the amount of traffic and parking that would be generated on the site. Uh, first thing I want to do, if possible, is I'm gonna share my screen very briefly, and I'm gonna share the planner's review letter. Um, I believe it was dated April eighteenth, just because I think it has a really good aerial exhibit as it relates to, um, you know, what this site looks like today from a traffic perspective, and then I'll later share, uh, some images from my, uh, parking and traffic study, which was submitted ten days in advance of the hearing.
Right, and, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is the planner's report, your planner's report. Would you like us to mark it? It's Mr. Hazel's report.
No, we don't have to mark it. We're just, it's Mr. Hazel's report.
Yes. So, Mr. Hazel's report, uh, and this is an image on page seven, and it's aerial image, and he had outlined the, uh, project site in red. And I want to highlight the fact that from, you know, a traffic parking access perspective, uh, what is going on on the site today. Um, and you'll obviously hear more from, uh, the applicant's planner, John McDonough, regarding these uses that are on the site today. Uh, but you could see the site is packed to the gills with cars on the lot, um, you know, related to the automobile uses on the property. Uh, in addition, and it's a little tougher to see from this aerial image, because there are actually cars blocking the driveways. But there are one, there's two driveways along Adams Street and two driveways along Delancey Street today. Um, so again, from a traffic parking perspective, this is a site that generates a significant amount of car storage, um, has a significant amount of curb cuts, again, for just on the property itself today, as well as, um, I would imagine, a number of the cars parked in the street, uh, are related to, uh, the uses on the site today. So, when you're thinking about the congestion, the traffic being generated, um, we want to also look back at existing conditions, uh, as well as what the proposed conditions may be on the site. So, I'm gonna stop sharing that image, um, for a second, but again, I, I thought it was a great image in the report, um, from, I guess, a planning perspective, but also from a traffic perspective, when you look at, uh, how the site is, has been occupied by a number of cars. Um, obviously, as part of this development, we are proposing a mixed-use building. Uh, we will have parking spaces under our building in a much more organized fashion than what you saw in that aerial image. Um, a- as was talked about, there are twenty-five actual parking spaces on the site, uh, um, but four of them are tandem parking spaces. So technically, about twenty-one tenants of the building will have either one or two parking spaces, um, uh, as needed. In terms of the traffic that'd be generated from a site like this, again, at forty-nine units, uh, in this location, we would expect anywhere between ten to fourteen trips in the busiest hours being generated coming in and out of those driveways. As you saw on, uh, our site engineer's, uh, plan, we do have two driveways, one on Adams, one on Delancey, and you did hear the conditions that we will agree with, um, engineer's recommendations, so that both of those driveways are, um, uh, limited access, meaning the one on Delancey will be right in, right out, the one on Adams be left in, left out, and we would have the proper audio and visual cues, so that our two driveways would, um, you know, uh, it would be safe for pedestrians to cross in front of our site. In terms of parking, and again, as Chairman mentioned, we are seeking a parking variance as part of this project. I want to highlight a couple items, um, uh, specific to this, uh, site, um, in terms of the mass transportation and parking availability. And that was, uh, studied and included within our, uh, traffic and parking report that was dated April eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. And I'm gonna share my screen. Again, this is figure one A in our report, so again, Chairman, I don't know if this needs to be marked, but this was just a sheet within the report itself.
Was this submitted to our?
Yeah, yes. Yes, this, this report was submitted to your office, yep. So, I just want to highlight a couple items. Um, so as part of this project, we did do a parking study. We studied the parking availability on, in all the areas that we've highlighted with red lines. Uh, that includes, uh, Delancey between Jefferson and Van Buren Street. Uh, it also includes Malvern Street, uh, all the way to Van Buren and halfway down to Jefferson Street, as well as Adams Street from Clifford to Chestnut. This is essentially a three-hundred-foot walking distance from the site itself, which is outlined in yellow. Um, we did this parking counts, uh, on a Thursday evening and a Friday morning, um, to get, uh, what we would expect to be the typical peak parking, um, experience on the streets itself. Um, we did note that the, uh, board's engineer, traffic engineer, did note that they wish to see some data regarding Saturday parking in this area, and we'd be happy to supplement our report as a condition, um, if the board wishes to include Saturday parking, uh, availability in this area. I also want to highlight on this map, about two blocks south of our site is the South Street, Adams Street bus stop. As you noticed that bus image, and maybe difficult to see, um, this is showing the bus stops that go along South Street. Um, this is actually a, a really, uh, well-served corridor for, uh, bus service. Um, in fact, if you were to stand on that corner during, you know, your typical morning peak hour, uh, looking at buses coming by to stop between, let's say, seven fifteen and eight fifteen, you'd see about six buses come here and stop that are on its way to Penn Station. So, you know, about one bus every ten minutes coming by this area. It's almost as good as being on a subway with a ten-minute headway. Obviously, you're hitting a little more traffic as you work yourself from South Street to, um, to, 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 uh, Penn Station here. But again, well-served by mass transit, just two blocks out of the site, you get a bus coming by every ten minutes, uh, during your normal commuting hours, either to or from Penn Station, as well as obviously other locations within, uh, Newark and surrounding neighborhoods. All stop at the stop two blocks out of the site, so very convenient for anyone living within this building. Um, for people that, um, and again, we do have parking spaces, uh, available on the street. Uh, as was, um, mentioned, uh, you know, this is, uh, part of the iron bound. It's not, uh, there's not a ton of on-street parking, but we did see fifteen parking spaces, um, in that study area available in the overnight hours, and thirty-five parking spaces available, um, in the morning hours, uh, when we did our study on, uh, April tenth and April eleventh of this year. So there is some parking spaces available on the street. Again, not a, not a ton. This is the iron bound. Um, you know, there's not a ton of excess parking, but we do believe the parking that we have on-site is sufficient. And one of the reasons why we do believe that, uh, is sufficient is the, the mass transit that is, you know, um, is served by this site. Uh, we actually looked at census data, and for the census tracts that surround this site, um, which are census tracts sixty-nine and seventy, um, which is generally about one or two blocks, um, north and south of the site, and east and west basically surrounding. Sixty percent of the respondents of the, of the census survey indicated they take mass transportation to their place of employment. So you could see, again, this is an area that is well-served, and people that are currently living here, you know, the neighbors of this potential development, sixty percent of them are using mass transit today. So we think that, again, this is one of, you know, one, the transit system in, in Newark is one of the jewels, um, and one of the reasons why, um, you're seeing more and more development and more and more desire for people to move to the city. And again, I think that, um, you know, this site is well-served and can support the parking that we have on this site. I do want to note, again, you'll hear from, uh, Mr. McDonough regarding the density, um, and, and the style of building we have here. But again, it's important to note that, you know, Newark is meant to be a place for people to live, and you want to have, you know, homes and residences for people, and, you know, it shouldn't necessarily be designed for cars, and just having more and more parked cars inside your building isn't exactly getting, um, you know, to the, some of the goals from the transportation perspective of the master plan. And again, I'll hi- hand off to the rest of the discussion about, um, you know, the, the, the variances that we're seeking, um, to Mr. McDonough, but as it relates to transportation and parking, I think your master plan speaks pretty specifically about the fact that, um, you know, this is a, this is a city that should take advantage of the mass transit and should be, you know, a location where people want to live and not necessarily store their car. Um, so again, I think from a traffic perspective, this is a site that has, um, pretty limited, um, additional traffic being added to the roadways. We are reducing the number of curb cuts. I'd say we'll probably reduce the amount of cars on the site. If you look at the, those aerial images, um, this is not, you know, a barren farm that's never seen traffic. Uh, this is a site that is, uh, going to increase traffic de minimisly. The amount of parking that we have on-site can be supported by the mass transit, and again, ten-minute headways, um, two blocks from a site is, is, you know, a great, uh, great mass transit option for anyone living in this building. I think you'll hear from the architect regarding bike parking within the building itself. Um, and again, living in the iron bound gives you the opportunity to frequent a mix of uses without necessarily needing to get in your car and drive, you know, six miles out of town. And again, I think that, you know, speaks to the, you know, circulation goals that the city has. So overall, again, I think the traffic, uh, that has been experienced would be de minimis, and the parking variance, as it relates from the technical standpoint, can be supported.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for this witness?
Uh, I just had one question. We referenced in the beginning and you, during your testimony, the report we received April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five from, uh, the department, uh, the Division of Traffic and Signals. In that report, there were several requests made with respect to some revisions and clarifications. Just for the record, we're okay with addressing all of those concerns and making those revisions that were noted in, in, in his, uh, in his report, including the supplemental with respect to the Saturday street parking, correct?
Correct, Saturday street parking. They wanted some information regarding parking space turnover, all that we could provide, and we would be, uh, make it, we agreed to a condition to update their report accordingly.
Thank you so much.
Uh, before I turn this over to the questions from the board, um, and, Mr. Traficante, uh, counsel Ketchins?
Yes, hi.
Hi, um, I understand that, uh, rather than proceed and having to come back, you'd like to ask for an adjournment, is that correct?
Yes, please, thank you.
Um, so th- there were several objectors here, uh, on this matter. Can those obje- are those objectives still here? Could you raise your hand if you're still here on First Avenue? All the persons regarding First Avenue, r- raise your hand, thank you. Counsel, um, if the board approves the adjournment, uh, we can, um, guarantee that you'll be heard on, um, June the twelfth, it'll be the second case. Uh, Mr. Traficante, will that give you enough time to review this? Um, all the engineering matters you need to review and get a report in to all parties?
Yes, as long as there's no further changes, I run with what I got, yeah.
Well, we already know that there are some revisions.
Well, so are the revised plans forthcoming again, or is this it?
The ones that were sent, uh, were, were the revised plans.
Okay, so those are the ones where you're gonna run with?
That's correct.
Alright, yeah, no problem.
So that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay, June twelfth works for you, counsel?
Uh, our architect will not be available. We request the next June date, please.
Uh, Ms. Mahir?
Yes, June twenty-sixth.
How many cases are on that day?
One.
Does that work? Ms. Ketchins?
Yes, please.
June twenty-sixth works. So counsel, as, um, um, I appreciate your working with the board. Um, I wonder if your applicant would agree to put, uh, just paste the new date on the, um, sign on the site and to send out via regular mail a notice with the new date to the notice list. Is that something your applicant would agree to, counsel?
Yes, we would agree to that.
I appreciate that. The board appreciates that. Um, can we have a motion to adjourn this matter to June twenty-sixth? And right before I do that, let me explain to the, um, objectors here, what, what's happening here. Uh, our engi- uh, the city engineer raised a concern that he had not been able to, uh, he didn't have adequate time to review the, uh, plans, the revised plans submitted by the applicant. The applicant, uh, counsel has agreed to provide that, uh, time, so the city engineer can review this and to come back on June twenty-sixth. Um, applicant has further agreed to, uh, update, um, the sign on the site, uh, showing the new date of June twenty-sixth and sending out a notice, regular mail, uh, showing, uh, advising the new date, and we appreciate the applicant doing that. So, uh, if you, um, I would hope that if you have a concern about this and you're an objector here this evening, you'll come back on June twenty-sixth. May I have a motion adjourning this matter to June twenty-sixth?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, Comisánias, may I have a second?
Second.
And of course, um, I may not have put it in the record, forgive me, I'm, we are talking about application ZBA dash twenty-four dash sixteen, two eighty-two, First Avenue. We have a motion, Comisánias, second, Rivera, adjourning this matter to June twenty-sixth. Call the roll, please.
Member Hardesty?
Yes.
Member Comisánias?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Rivera?
Yes.
Member Cobian?
Yes.
Michelle Mountford?
Yes.
You're fine.
Yes, thank you, counsel. Have a good evening. We'll see you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Traficante, you had your hand raised regarding Mr. Sekler's testimony?
Yes, sir. I had one or two quick questions regarding their, uh, tra- parking study.
I think I, uh, you already sworn, I remind you, uh, your questions, Mr. Traficante.
Yes, uh, Mr. Sekler, uh, trust, referring to the review member, review member memo dated April twenty-third of this year. Alright, there were a couple bull points. First three are statements of fact. But, uh, on the second page, the fourth bull point, we had asked for a parking study to include a Saturday and a Sunday. So that's something you'd be willing, you and your client would be willing to do?
Yes, we'd be willing to satisfy all the outstanding requests in that letter, including Saturday and Sunday. Sorry for not specifying Sunday.
Likewise, your traffic study or parking study was performed on a Friday. You've done enough traffic impact studies and parking studies with my office to know we exclude Mondays and Fridays. Why'd you do it on the eleventh, which was a Friday?
Well, we did it on Thursday, and we want to avoid street cleaning, and that area has street cleaning, I believe, on Tuesday and Wednesday. So we did Friday for our second day, but we definitely, again, can include another weekday, uh, if you'd like, or, or do another Thursday if you wish.
Alright, and any other days but Mondays or Fridays?
Okay.
Two more points, okay? On page two of the report, on the paragraph under site circulation, parking and supply, you referenced the proposed expansion to the deli market under the site plan prepared by AWZ Engineering Incorporated. Uh, because the traffic engineer shall provide testimony to the board as to what proposed expansion to what existing deli market are they talking about?
I think that was a copy from a old report that snuck its way into this one.
Alright, last question. You based, I think I ba- you based your reductions for electric charge vehicles on a number of required parking spaces. Was that correct?
Correct, um, I think your, y- your planner does it, and I think you do it the other way, uh, on the.
It's not much proposed, since you're asking for parking variance, it's number poles that you based the reduction on, not the number required.
Correct.
Alright, so you're gonna have to reflect that as well. Agreed?
Agreed.
Alright, no further questions, thank you.
Are there any questions from the bo- from, from the board for the traffic engineer? Questions from the traffic en- for the traffic engineer from the board? Are there questions from the public for the traffic engineer? Questions from members of the public for the traffic engineer? Counsel? You are muted.
Now I, I did it, I apologize. Uh, I have no additional questions for Mr. Sekler. I'd like to call our project architect, please.
Mr. Robinson, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Uh, please state your name, your address, and your relationship to this application, please.
My name's Dave Robinson. I'm a partner at SUEAD Architects. Uh, I'm a registered architect. I've been an architect for thirty years. Our practice is, uh, here in Newark on seventy-four Bruin Street for the past twenty years. Uh, I am the project architect for this project.
Mr. Robinson, you've appeared before this board in the past, haven't you?
I have.
And your light, your architectural license in the state of New Jersey is currently in full. And your lite- your architectural license in the state of New Jersey is currently in full force and effect. Is that correct?
It is, correct.
We'll accept Mr. Robinson as an expert in the field of architecture.
Thank you.
And thank you, and thank you, Chairman, for that. Um, Mr. Sekler, your office and and you prepared the plans that were submitted as part of this application for the six-story building, correct?
Yes.
All right, and if you can, um, the plans that, uh, you will sh- walk us through through the share, uh, are they the plans that were submitted?
They were. Uh, we added some renderings that last week that were that were new, refined. And, uh, the plans, uh, haven't changed tonight, but we did add a little color to help identify certain properties. So the only thing that difference is color.
All right, so I'm going to mark those, uh, Mr. Chairman, as A one. I don't believe we've marked anything else, just because there is, there is, they they do differ somewhat.
And you'll get them into us as soon as possible, counsel?
Yes, they will.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, if you can, please, uh, walk the board through the proposed, uh, project.
Can everybody see that?
Not yet.
Okay, so this is looking at the southeast corner, uh, where the project property is located on the corner of Delancey and Adams. So Adam Street, the one-way street is to the right, and Delancey is to the left. And what this shows, uh, this image quickly shows the commercial space on the corner, uh, which lends itself to be a community service need of a retail store or office or any other type of commercial as permitted. And then on top of that is five floors of, uh, apartment residential uses. Uh, we indicate the trees, uh, the shade trees that are on the, on the, um, that are proposed to be new. Uh, right now, there's only one tree on the site. So there's, there's now, uh, eight trees on the property. And you can see that the facade articulates a little bit because of the, we we took advantage of the existing, um, site conditions. There were some interesting angles. And the fifth floor, I'm sorry, the sixth floor, we pushed back, we set it back from from the facade uh, to, uh, and treat it differently architecturally as just, uh, a a practice of softening, softening the height of the building. So I I want to reorient yourself here from the engineer. The engineering, uh, plans always have north a- as as pointing up. Uh, uh, us architects like to enter the building straight. So we're, north is to your, now to your right, and we are entering from Adam Street. So the retail commercial space is to the lower left. And the floor plate of this, uh, floor is up slightly, so we have, uh, uh, an accessible ramp, uh, located in the middle of the building, uh, to the main lobby, uh, of the building. And in in the main lobby, uh, you have access to two stairs, uh, the elevator, and you have access from the parking area into the lobby. As noted previously, the entrance, the vehicular entrance from Adams is on the right, and the vehicular entrance and exit, uh, from Delancey is on the upper left. Uh, we indicate where the street, shade trees are, and we've identified with additional green areas, uh, in the back northwest corner, which is, um, uh, indicated with the green, uh, shading. And this is a corner lot, so there is no rear yard. And shaded, uh, the gray shade is the image of the building that's above. Um, basically, the 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 ground floor is covered with parking, but the building is a little bit smaller as it goes up. And just to indicate, this is below the lobby. This is the area that is the service basement where all the meters will be. Everything is being serviced underground into, uh, meter rooms, uh, and and a fire sprinkler valve. And this is only accessible to building management. You know, residents do not go down here. So this is a typical floor, uh, which is floors two, three, four, and five. And you can s- you can see, uh, the articulation of the facade a little bit that's different from, you know, down below. And it lend- it lent itself to have an opportunity to have some green spaces in, on the building itself. So these areas will be native plantings that don't need regularly maintenance, that are naturally, um, you know, uh, they behave with this this climate. They won't need much attention. But it does, it does soften, uh, the, uh, you know, the appearance for residents. Uh, this typical floor has, uh, ten, ten units, and they vary from studios uh, to two bedrooms. So studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and there's a one bedroom with a den. Um, in in the upper right, I just highlight this, a typical studio, you know, which is right about here. Uh, this one is approximately four hundred square feet. It has a, an accessible bathroom and it has a kitchen and, um, in an open space. Let me move this out of here. And the, the unit in the middle, uh, right here is the, uh, the one bedroom with the den, a bonus room. So going to the next floor, I just, we're to continue on the typical floor, but we're going to highlight, this will be the one-bedroom unit. And this one-bedroom unit again has, uh, you know, a fully accessible kitchen, uh, it has, you know, um, one bedroom, which is, you know, a nice size. It's fifteen feet, fifteen and a half feet by ten and a half feet, plus a full-size walk-in closet, a fully accessible, uh, uh, restroom, uh, with 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 a with a tub and shower and an open living room. This, this unit is approximately five hundred ninety-five square feet. And then again, on this floor, a typical two-bedroom takes advantage of corner windows and has, has the y- you know, the option of having a bath and a half. So it does have a fully accessible, uh, toilet room, uh, as well as a, a for the primary bedroom, uh, a private bath, uh, for that, for that bedroom. Uh, bedrooms here are also generously sized at twelve feet by twelve feet, twelve and a half feet by ten feet, uh, with an open kitchen and, uh, you know, areas for washers and dryers in the units themselves. So every tenant has access to their own personal washer and dryer, as well as a split system air conditioning, you know, heating and cooling. Okay.
And would you say this is the consistent floor plan for second through fifth or six, four?
Fifth, two, three, four, and five.
Great, thank you. So this is the typical, and you had indicated there are ten units, um, per floor. You stated four studios, three one-bedrooms, one one-bedroom with a den, and two two-bedrooms, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And just, uh, for the typical floor itself, the 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 corridor is is minimal, um, you know, it's a very tight-knit, uh, space, you know, not long hallways, and we felt that it was a good use of 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 design. And then the building itself in the back, it does recess in to allow light into the one-bedroom with the den, the bonus, the bonus room apartment. So this would be the sixth, the sixth floor, which we again set back from the from, it's not only set back from the second floor, but it's also set back from the typical floors. Um, and, um, you know, this is again a typical floor, floor plate, but this would have the nine units. A two-bedroom, two studios, two one-bedrooms, a bedroom with a den, a one-bedroom, and then two two-bedrooms. And again, these, these would also have, because they're set back, uh, indicated in green are areas where, again, we could have natural vegetation that could spill off the top of the, of the balcony, uh, walls, um, as well as the brown areas we indicate are, you know, private terraces where someone could step out. Not necessarily have a table and chair out there, but at least could step out and get some natural ventilation and see the, see the views from this, from this floor. There's great views of the port. There's great views of, uh, of down, you know, the the Passaic Valley, uh, and, you know, the airport. There's a lot of great views facing, facing east and south.
So, Mr. Robinson, based on the residential units that are being located on between the second and the sixth floor, I've counted nineteen studios, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
One, uh, fourteen one-bedroom units, one, uh, five one-bedroom units with a den, and eleven two-bedroom units. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Thank you. And I believe we have a roof deck that we're proposing as an amenity.
Yes, so we are going to continue the elevator in this, one of the stairs all the way to the roof. Uh, we do have some equipment for the, for the residential units and the commercial unit up here. But, uh, we do have a, an amenity space where, um, people could, uh, use the interior space during inclement weather, but also have an exterior space to take advantage of, you know, weather, like we had today, uh, where they could lounge, and I'll try to zoom in here. And by code, we have to have an accessible bathroom up here as well, and we also provide a small kitchenette in case, uh, someone wanted to reheat something up, uh, for a small party or or whatever, whatever building management would allow. And this is contained, uh, you you, we don't want, we want to keep people away from the roof, so it is contained by a small wall, um, but it'll have a nice decorative flooring, um, and it's just to be a very comfortable space with lounge chairs and also some vegetation up here to soften, soften the, uh, you know, the the hardscape of this, uh, area. We are proposing a cool roof, uh, so just to be aligned with a lot of the energy codes in New Jersey. Let me zoom out again. And then these are just the the building elevations. Um, the Adam Street elevation is on the right and the Delancey elevation is on the left. And here we are pushing and pulling of materials. We have a combination of brick veneer uh, with with interesting, uh, pattern styles. It's not just a standard, uh, brick. Uh, we're looking at, you know, uh, sort of metallic bricks with orientating the the pattern differently. We feel that, you know, we can make this building feel more upscale by just tweaking the labor and have, uh, you know, have a dynamic that you don't really see, uh, a lot here in Newark. Uh, Teachers Village has it, and it's, it's done really well. It doesn't, um, it doesn't really cost extra money to do it, but they've found a way also to just have a building look differently and more more interesting than just the standard. The middle would be also, uh, a paneling of, uh, composite material that is used for siding, um, and it has, uh, a relief, uh, texture also, um. And, um, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's going to be very interesting to use here. The windows themselves, they're, they're, they're metal, metal windows, frames, but we are incorporating a, a, an aluminum a portal around it that gives it some dimension. You could see on the, on the left-hand side of the building where it it actually protrudes architecturally away from the facade. So it's going to create a lot of nice shades and and shadows, uh, and also privacy, uh, for here. Down in the bottom left, you can see where the retail space is. Uh, you can see where the ramp.
And and again, Mr. Robinson, as it relates to the retail space, we don't have a tenant as of yet, so we understand that, uh, no signage is being proposed for that space, but we will, if and when it's occupied, uh, we will certainly attempt to conform with the so, uh, city ordinances. Is that your understanding?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely. And just also, uh, you you can see where the ramp goes up to the front door of the building, so that's where the the door entrance will be. And then covering the garage is a louver system that is fifty percent visually, um, open. So it seems like a wall in this drawing, but it's actually, um, a system of, of, uh, vertical slots that, um, that are, uh, have a color, but you can see through half of it. Uh, you can see a very similar situation at the parking, the municipal parking garage on Green Street, where they used a, a very similar approach. Um, it's, it's very interesting. It also gives texture and, um, you know, in interest to the, to the building. And I have some photos down here in the bottom where you can see these materials. How do we get rid of this guy here?
And and if I can, Mr. Robinson, while you do that, there's a variance that was identified for insufficient building facade transparency. What's required by city ordinance is thirty-five percent, and what we're proposing is twenty-seven percent. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that that's somewhat de minimis, given, I think, what you've shown in the percentage-wise, um, and the justification for that would be, um, if you can provide, uh, for the design reason rationale?
Yeah, we just feel that, you know, punched windows is very residential and feel, uh, larger windows tends to be more commercial. Uh, so we felt like by, by increasing the depth of the portal and making, I mean, these windows are very large. There are, sometimes they're eight feet by seven feet. They're very large windows. So we just felt that that was, it was, you know, it was contextual with the neighborhood, with the style of architecture, you know, with the punched openings.
Thank you.
And then on the other side of, um, on Delancey Street, we have, again, the same sort of material makeup with with brick veneer, uh, having fun with, uh, the way the bricks are stacked. Um, then we have the composite, you know, siding. And then at the bottom, we have, uh, more, more brick, um, at the base. Now, I could probably show it better on the rendering, but in areas, uh, we, we call this thing the, um, the vented brick pattern. So it's, it's a brick wall in this in, uh, left-hand corner, but it's also fifty percent visual. So you can see the activity. You can see, you can see cars. You can see light spillage onto the sidewalk. You can see people walking back. So it's a, it's a, you know, it's an interesting way to to make a screen, um, in a very affordable manner. And it's, this is the garage door, which is also a sliding door, which is again those metal slats, uh, the louver system that, um, is part of the other facade as well. And again, uh, let me zoom down to these photos really quickly. So just to give you a quick idea what these are. So this is the metal slat system, which will be covering the garage, so it is semi-transparent. It doesn't feel like a wall. Um, to the, to the right, this is the vented brick system, where we'll have that also in the garage. I don't think you can see my cursor.
Yeah, we can.
Okay. And this is, uh, another way of treating the composite panels, um, where that's simple siding, but it's, you know, it's turned vertically, and it's just very interesting material to work with. Uh, and that same material comes, uh, in flat, um, you know, lap siding as well. So we're using the same, we're suggesting the same manufacturer, uh, but a different style in in so, in the upper portions of the building. Let me go back here. And then the rear, uh, the fas- the facade to the left is facing west. And that's the open slot where you have the one-bedroom with the, with the bonus den space. Again, lots of windows. And then the space, uh, facing, um, north, um, which is, you know, again, lots of windows, um, and, uh, you know, an appropriate material. We think it's, it's, it's again the composite siding. And you can see the roof deck, amenity space, uh, on the top, uh, and, you know, the, uh, the spaces that that lend itself up there. What else we have here? So again, we won't, so we've seen this image of of this portion. You can see the extruded, uh, port portals of the windows. You can see the setbacks of the typical floors, and you see the uppermost floor even setback further with green, uh, green areas spilling over. We're trying to make this building as green as possible. This is looking back the one, one-way street on Adam Street. So you're seeing the fa- the facade to the right is facing north. And then this facade with the, you know, shifted angles is facing east. And we don't encourage people to park in bike lanes in Newark. And then this is the, this is the view from Delancey Street. Uh, again, uh, articulating facades, setbacks, green, green areas, and then the, uh, vented brick at the bottom, which shows some transparency, um, allowing natural light and and visual of people, uh, activity to be part of the streetscape. That would complete my presentation.
Counsel, further questions for this witness?
Uh, just the one question. You've, uh, received and reviewed the reports that were submitted as part of the, uh, uh, we received on our end from the city. That includes the planner's report as well as the report from the Department of Engineering. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And as it relates to those items that are engineering in nature, uh, I'm not engineer, architectural in nature, you don't have any issues with respect to addressing those comments or the conditions that are stated, if any, correct?
Not at all, not at all.
Uh, I have no additional questions.
Mr. Hazel? You're muted.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, a big, uh, question. Uh, I noticed that you mentioned a few times you related to that space on the first floor as a retail space?
Commercial, yeah.
Uh, that would render this building not a multifamily residential, but a mixed-use building, which is an entirely set of st- different standards. It 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 is, it would be problematic.
So what if this was a building amenity space?
Excuse me?
What if this was a building amenity space?
It would be limited to that. It would not be able to be used in a commercial way with customers and so. And at this point, I think you want to seriously consider keeping it as that, because the standards for a mixed-use building would be very different.
Okay.
Okay, and, um, uh, Mr. Chair, I would also recommend, uh, condition be posed on this, that it not be used for any retail commercial activity other than building amenity.
Counsel, you agree to that? Would, uh, do you need a moment to speak to your applicant, or?
Yeah, do you mind just one moment?
Uh, we'll take five minutes. We'll be back at eight twenty-five, counsel, and, uh, you know the possibilities.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
What?
Okay, folks, could start to come back? Missionary Spirit come back, right?
Recording in progress.
So counsel, uh, have you had a chance to talk to your applicant?
We did.
And are we gonna, are we gonna proceed or?
Yes, actually, we do want to apologize for the confusion. The application that we did submit was for the, um, multifamily building. There was no commercial use. Uh, so we will keep that space as amenity tenant space. It was not intended to be commercial space.
Okay, so as a condition of approval, you agree that, um, this space will not be used for commercial space?
Correct.
And you, will you agree to, um, um, including that as a deed restriction, counsel?
Uh, we'll not do a deed restriction. It'll be a zoning restriction. For the use. If we were to use that as commercial space, it would be zoning violation.
Well, um, yeah. So you rejecting the idea of a, of a deed restriction, counsel?
I am. I'm agreeing to the restriction as a, a condition of approval.
Yeah, all we need is someone to go out there and check, uh, Commissioner Rivera.
Well, uh, well, I'd like to go back to the architect. If you could show me the ground plan again, uh, garage, I guess, please.
What, just one second, uh, counsel, you finished with, uh, you have any further questions for your architect?
I, I do not. I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, we're now in this, uh, yeah, counsel. I mean, uh, Commissioner Rivera, your question?
Uh, it's more of the, show me the commercial space again.
Well, there is no commercial space anymore.
He had the manatees to see what the tenants just gained.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Dave Robinson, the architect. Um, it was labeled interior building amenity space. That was my error. Apologize for that.
Good site. Thank you. So under the restroom, and they're already, alright. Thank you, thank you.
Other questions for the architect? What's the size of that space, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, five hundred thirty-five square feet. Let me just, I can zoom out for the dimensions here. It's thirty feet by. It's so hard to work this. Bear with me, sorry.
No, it wasn't.
It's thirty feet by twenty foot four, twenty feet.
Thank you. And, uh, the rooftop amenity space. Is that, is that on the sixth floor or is that above the apartments on the sixth floor?
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the roof. So.
So this would be like on the seventh floor then, correct?
Yes, it was on the roof with all the, where the equipment is. Let me go back here. Yeah.
So, so why wouldn't that make this a seventh floor, Ms. Robinson?
Uh, I think it's because it's such a small space up here. Um.
I, I, I seem to remember something, a size doesn't matter, isn't it?
Uh, we've always seen it as, as a roof. So, um, we're just taking advantage of the roof.
Yeah, but you have a structure up there. So now I'm concerned that that's a seventh floor. You see my concern? I, we, we love amenity spaces.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're just trying to give a space for the residents and we thought that the roof was, uh, an appropriate space for it.
We love amenity spaces, but now we're in an area that, um, um, limits buildings to five stories. Uh, you're asking for six stories and now maybe you're really asking for seven stories.
And if.
Wrong.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe this is a question for the planner too, that the mid-rise can go up to.
Great minds think alike. I was just gonna ask Mr. Hazel.
Yes, uh, I, I. Yes, I, it, it, it's a concern that I had as well. Why I didn't pursue it is because I know a variance isn't being required for this. But I am concerned that it, this is in fact a seventh floor, if for nothing else but to, uh, the accuracy of the record. You know, in my opinion, it is a seventh floor.
And Mr. Hazel, what is, what is allowed with this use that we're asking for? How many floors?
Well, that's, again, it's eight, eight floors are permitted, but again, the building itself is not permitted because it's a mid-rise. So, you know, it, it, the standards that go along with the mid-rise say that it can go up to eight stories. But the mid-rise building itself is not permitted here. So you have to take that into account as well.
So would you not say, uh, and I, we can have Mr. McDonough also, uh, opine, once I swear him in, to provide testimony on whether that would be subsumed, that additional, seven story, because we're seeking for the mid-rise, it's already incorporated into the relief that's being requested.
Yeah, but you also have to take into account the, um, positive and negative criteria. And one could argue that this is, uh, uh, in an area where the predominant building height is, uh, at least two floors under this, probably even more. And what is permitted is a maximum of two floors under this. One might, uh, consider this to be, uh, contributing to the negative impact of the building in the area.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would defer to, but I, I understand what you're saying. I think I would prefer, I don't want to belabor it without John's testimony. Um, you know, are the opinion is that it's negligible and, and so let's, I, 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 if we have any other questions for Mr. Robinson?
I can't imagine what Mr. McDonough would testify to. Mr. Robinson, um, what's the, the height of those buildings? On what might, and what, what we seem to be calling now the seventh floor? Cause your, your building structures there, is that correct?
Yeah, the elevator already is up there with a bulkhead and the stairs already up there. Um, it's, it's roughly ten foot six from the, from the floor, um, of the roof. But it's setback toward the middle of the building.
Right. Is that the amenity space or just the elevator and the bulkhead?
Well, the elevated bulkhead is part of that bulkhead. Yeah, it's part of that bulkhead.
So it's both the amenity space and the bulkhead?
Yeah.
Um, and what does that bring the height of the building to?
Let me see if I had it here on the side. Sorry. All these windows are here. Roughly. Uh, it's not the height. Sorry. Where do we see it here? On the left. No, it's not there. So this would be roughly sixty-seven, seventy-seven? Seventy-seven feet? Seventy-seven, seventy-eight feet.
Seventy-seven, seventy-eight. Um, okay, thanks. Um, uh, am I, am I correct that there's a studio? That measures three hundred ninety-six square feet?
Three ninety-six. Now we have to go find it. That's the floor.
Is that a studio that's three ninety-six or a large?
That's, it's a studio. We just have to find it, so.
Yeah. It sounds awfully small, no?
Yeah, it might, because they're all the same. Let me look on the sixth floor. This is the sixth floor, right? Our studios are all here. I know, but I checked the sixth floor. Bear with me. Yeah, I don't see it. So we have four hundred is the smallest one here. And that's a typical floor. And then the, the sixth floor. There's only two studios up here and they're here. Five twenty, it's the same as the floor below. So I don't see it. So it's, it's likely a typo.
Okay, great.
I can verify that with the CAD, the, you know, the architectural CAD drawings.
Commissioner Komi-San.
I, I was curious as to how notice was worded. Did it notice for? Did, did it notice six stories plus a rooftop amenity space? Or did it notice six stories?
Me, uh, is that, can I answer Jenna Carillo Perez? I apologize. Uh, I'm pulling up the notice now. We did notice for a six-story building, but I do believe the amenities, we noted rooftop amenity. Um, so I'm just pulling up my affidavit now for purposes of clarification. Um, but also I think there's, and, and if I can have Mr., before we belabor, um, the point, this is not a story. It's, uh, it's a six-story building itself. Um, and it's the amenities on the roof. So I just wanted to point that clarification out. Um, and I did, here, I found my notice. I apologize. Um, it's just the entertainment space and a parking space, hold on. Yeah, so what we're, we're, so I just want to be clear in the legal terminology, just to be clear, it's a six-story building. It's not a seven-story building. Um, we're not adding a story. The amenity space is on the roof. It's not an additional floor. But I did not notice for, um, I did not notice a seven-story. It is a six-story building.
So, uh, the amenity, the rooftop amenity wasn't noticed?
No, just amenity space. I apologize. Just amenity space.
Right, which is on the first floor.
I didn't specify the floor, so, yeah.
Yeah, counsel's position, um, is that, um,
To what?
To the rooftop space. Doesn't constitute another floor.
I have a second question.
Please.
Is there, you know, this, this was going, you know, there was still more information to be provided, but is there anything on the books that, you know, could, i- i- let's say we made that space smaller where it doesn't count. Uh, you know, say like, i- are, are we counting it as a floor? Are we not counting it as a floor if it's below a certain square footage? Does that solve the problem?
Counsel certainly hopes so.
No, I believe so. I know there's, there's some language in the code for an exemption. I would almost like to, um, have. Yeah, I believe there's something in the code that provides it. We just, if you would just, either Mr. Robinson or Mr. McDonough may actually have it. That's why I wanted to call him to provide some additional testimony on this.
And, and, and we'll get to Ms. McDonough. Any further questions, Commissioner Komi-San?
Uh, no, but I'm eager to hear what they have to say.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Rivera.
Uh, if they were to remove their amenities, wouldn't, I know most Adam Street is full of these bills. I, I didn't, I'll go into detail later if anything, because would they still need an elevator to be there? And would that still count as a seventh floor? Because they would still need their equipments or whatever, HBX, uh, whatever may be on the top floor. Uh, would that still be considered a seventh floor? That's what I'm curious now. Only because they put some chairs and took some space. Now it became the seventh floor, because I know there's, most buildings have an elevator to go up to the top of the roof, right? Doesn't have to, it's not for the tenants most of the time, if they're older buildings, right? Uh, so would that still consider a seventh floor? That's, I'm really curious if somebody's able to answer that, but I guess, oh, we'll wait for the, the planner.
Yeah, Bobby.
So, um, and I'm hoping Mr. Hazel can, uh, spread some.
Yeah, my, my Gerard Hazel Board Planner, my sense of it is this, that the, their most ordinances do, do provide, uh, uh, provisions for an elevator bulkhead or stair bulkhead. And many of them limit the height above the, the, the rooftop that they're allowed to be. Um, here you have an area that's, you know, not small. Uh, no, not in, not, not, not of some size that is being used for something other than the utilities and so on that are necessarily have to be on the rooftop. So in that case, it's, it, it's, it's not like you have an open rooftop with, uh, chairs and some landscaping. chairs and some landscaping and maybe a pergola or something. This is a a relatively, um I would say permanent structure, and I think enclosing it with the uh bulkhead sort of reen with enclosing it with the elevator and stair bulkhead, being part of it, I think further reinforces that, so I mean, I I'd I'd like to hear what Mr. McDonough and others have to say as well.
Okay, that was a very lawyer-like answer, thank you. Um.
This is Dave, the architect, again, it's roughly four hundred square feet. Based on a rooftop of almost eight thousand square feet.
Okay, so uh once again, the total square feet of that amenity space on the rooftop?
The building itself, I put it in red, it's four hundred.
Okay, and how much of that is enclosed? It's all enclosed?
That's all enclosed, yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay.
And it's set back from the from all facades. It's basically in the middle of the building.
So the lounge chairs are indoors, is that correct?
All the chairs are outside with a simple fence around it.
Okay.
So everything in red is underneath the roof in a building?
Okay, everything in red, okay, and 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 that includes the inside uh amenity space, correct?
There's a bathroom and a kitchen at, yes.
And I, are there stairs that you're including there in the bulkhead also?
Yes, the stairs are located in the back, back here, and then the elevator is here.
Can you tell us the size of just the indoor amenity space?
So it's roughly eleven and a half feet by twenty-six by twenty-seven.
Okay.
I need to move the screen. So that's twenty-six by eleven? Two hundred eighty-six square feet.
Okay, and that's the indoor amenity space on the
That's that's including the stair and the elevator, so if I, yes, it's eleven, that's correct. Eleven by twenty-seven is two hundred eighty-six square feet. Indoor amenity space.
Okay, two eighty-six square feet, excluding the stairs and the bulkhead.
Correct, so that now it's in this red, yeah.
Great, fantastic, that's, that might be helpful, right, if that constitutes a floor or not? Counsel, I'm sorry, let Mr. Robinson. Go right ahead.
I was just saying it could be also an elevator lobby, you know, that's it's something that's serviceable, it's functional.
Okay, um, counsel.
Um, I would like to call Mr. John McDonough.
Mr. McDonough, could you um raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony about the law to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Would you state your name, uh, give us your address in relationship to this application?
My name is John McDonough, my address is one zero one Gibraltar Drive, and I'm the project one zero one Gibraltar Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey, and I'm the project planner.
Uh, Mr. McDonough is well-known to this board. Mr. McDonough, is your uh planning license in the city of New Jersey in full force and effect?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Um. We'll accept Mr. McDonough as an expert in the field of architecture, I mean, in the field, no, not architecture.
The professional plan, thank you. Uh, Mr. McDonough, as our professional planner, you've uh you got an opportunity to review the plans that were submitted as well as the revised plans that were submitted to the city, correct?
Correct.
And you've heard the testimony that was presented this evening and are familiar with the City of Newark ordinances and the master plan, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So based on your understanding of the ordinances and the master plan and what you've seen this evening, can you put and and what you've reviewed and heard this evening, can you please provide the board with your planning, uh planner analysis with respect to the relief that's being requested specifically on the D-one, the D-five, and the C variances?
Yes, we'll start with the practical, and Mr. Chairman, you'll probably be relieved, I'm not going to show any exhibits here, I think Mr. Sackler's um actually tell the story here. From a from a pure practical standpoint, our applicant is doing a good thing, taking a site that is clearly discordant with its surrounds. Um, we know that the Lancy Street is transforming with new development, this is going to continue that that positive transformation. Pulling residential into a mixed use, uh which includes residential uh uses is a good thing from a planning standpoint, certainly repurposing this site that could use help um is a good thing from a planning standpoint, and all goes towards the general welfare. Um, in exchange for those positives, the applicant is asking the board to move on I'll say three main variances, there's others that are listed, um but you've got the two Ds to grapple with. We are two units into a density variance, that's it, two units above, forty-nine proposed, forty-seven allowed. And we are one story into a a D variance that triggers actually a use variance, where we're now a mid-rise as opposed to a low-rise, which is permitted in the zone, and that's uh with the MX-one zone recently switching where a a low-rise building would be uh five stories permitted in the in the zone, we're now six stories, so we're up to a a mid-rise, so one extra story, I'm going to come back to that seventh story in a in a second. Um, I think your your ordinance will help the board in that regard. Um, but you got the D-one for the extra story, you got the D-five for two extra units. And then you got the parking with, which Mr. Sackler really addressed. The requirement is forty-nine, the proposal is twenty-six. But Mr. Sackler gave you good detail about the availability of on-street parking to mitigate that. And of course, the availability of mass transit to mitigate that as well. Um, again, with the common planning theme that we want to cluster people in urban centers as opposed to vehicles, and given the uh high walk scores that you have here in the city, the walkable nature of this particular area. Um, we think that's a good thing from a from a planning standpoint. In terms of the um, the question about what's happening on the roof there. Uh, there is good language in your ordinance, I'm sorry, I'm turning sideways to you all because I'm reading from the actual code. But you have exemptions in your ordinance for certain bulk parameters. For example, you have setback exemptions for bay windows, for porches, stoops, those kind of things. And on a vertical level, you have height exemptions as well, including some of the things you've been talking about. Bulkheads, um rooftop appurtenances, utilities. Your ordinance actually also groups amenity space into that definition of height exemptions and there are certain parameters, I think Dave can certainly uh elaborate or justify in this. It looks to me like we comply on all of them, but I'm referring to section forty-one colon five dash five point one two. Forty-one colon five dash five point one two. Um, again, sorry, I'm sideways, for buildings four stories or taller, rooftop appurtenances such as mechanical equipment, penthouses, elevator overruns, stair towers, amenity spaces, and other similar items may exceed the height limit by up to ten feet. It looks to me like we're below that ten-foot mark, and I'm going to certainly yield to Dave in that regard. Um, setback at a distance from any roof edge greater than or equal to its height. And further provided that the cumulative area uh by such a purpose does not exceed twenty percent of the roof area. Given the small size of this space, given the fact that it's below ten feet, and given the fact that it's well set back from the roof edge, I think we qualify here under that exemption, so this would not qualify uh towards your, towards additional height in the building, um and is therefore not a story in in my opinion, so I think that gives the board the the cover, if you will, uh that our applicant has properly properly noticed here for six stories with a rooftop amenity, that certainly adds value and quality uh to the livability of of this place. And we think that's also a good thing from a planning standpoint. In terms of the justification for the use relief, again, this is going to go towards the planning goal to promote the general welfare with new housing stock, that's purpose A in the land use law. We also look at purpose G to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. You've got a nice diversified mix of unit types here. Um, also purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. You saw Dave's renderings, this is going to be a beautiful building to anchor and accentuate that corner. We've got the top level is recessed, so it's going to look like a five-story from the ground level. And then finally, purpose M, efficient use of land, taking what's there, what's undesirable, wiping out, wiping it out, and starting with a fresh, uh beautiful repurposing of of this site. Counterbalancing that, use relief can be granted without any substantially adverse impacts. It all comes down to that extra story, which we don't think causes any visual or functional harm here. Likewise, the additional density relief here, we're looking at two extra units, if we were two fewer and a story lower, this would be a a planning board application. So we think the mass and the scale and the density is not um off par, if you will, um with what the zone contemplates. Um, all of that said, we think relief can be granted for the D relief without any substantially adverse impacts. You don't have undersized units here, this is not going to be overcrowding or overdevelopment. And the degree of departure from the zone plan is not substantial here. Parking, I'll rely and fall back again on Mr. Sackler's testimony that the parking supply will meet the actual demand, given the availability of other amenities, both parking and mass transit in the area. And then finally, subsumed within that D relief, there is building coverage and lock coverage, there's a very, very minor setback relief uh less than half a foot, all of which are necessary to effectuate those D benefits that I just gave you and effectuate a really good repurposing of the site. With that said, uh this applicant, based on all of the testimony, um has met its burden under the law and approval is warranted. Um, Jen, I'll stop unless you have redirect.
Uh, um, noth- none at all, I just wanted clarification because I did find the find the provision you noted with respect to the height. And that is section forty-one colon five dash five dash one subsection two. So just for purposes of clarification, that's the reference um that indicates uh the review of the amenity spaces, along with other things like a penthouse, um can be up to ten feet as you indicated, um just reiterating what you've indicated from the ordinance. Uh, the setback from the roof edge. I'm asking him to, I'm just clarifying his reading of the ordinance.
Yeah, uh, but rather than doing that, can I just ask uh Mr. Hazel to just confirm that um we uh this meets those requirements with your architect?
Absolutely.
Mr. Hazel?
Yes, um, could you just demonstrate that the uh area of enclosure does meet the uh twenty percent? And um, the way I look at this, again, and again, it's 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 up to interpretation. Um, if you go back to the roof, uh, and, well, actually, I have it up, never mind. Um, if you look, go back to the roof area, it talks about if not the 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 proposed recreation area and uh other bulkheads, et cetera, not exceed twenty percent. Um, i- i- in, can you uh demonstrate that that is the case with the rooftop? I don't remember what you said the total was.
Miss, Mr. uh, Mr. De, it's okay, Chairman, Mr. Robinson, to be called back to do the calculation?
Yes, I I, that's where we are.
Yeah.
I would like to do this in my AutoCAD, so I'm gonna get an exact number.
Yeah.
Uh, with the PDFs, it might be a little tricky, so if you just give me a minute or so, I'll be able to give exact numbers.
While you're uh pulling up your AutoCAD, uh, Mr. McDonough, from his old engineering background, is working on his slide rule.
I'm just going by eye, this is how I measure.
I apologize for the delay.
No worries. I don't know if they make slide rules anymore, no, certainly no one knows how to use them, I think they're in museums now.
Okay. So the area of the roof um on the sixth floor, the sixth floor roof is seven thousand and ninety-five square feet. The amenity space of enclosure with with the elevator, the stair, and the interior space is five hundred and thirty-five square feet. Which roughly is around seven point five percent.
Um, does it, does the the uh provision in the ordinance limit amenity space to just what's enclosed and not the whole many space?
Then it would be smaller, if it, that's true.
What would be smaller?
Well, if if the amenity space is just the enclosed space, that's a smaller space, that's only two hundred eighty-six square feet. If it includes the enclosed space and the place outside says where the chairs are, that's five hundred and thirty-five square feet.
Is is that the case?
No, no, the five thirty-five was the enclosure of the amenity plus the stair plus the elevator.
I'm talking about the entire amenity space.
Okay, let me do that.
So it's smaller than five thirty-five?
It would be larger, because now we're increasing, we're adding, yeah.
Let me be quiet.
So now I own, I don't add the elevator and the stair, correct? It's just the amenity space?
It says that, it says the, I can never see that, the 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 bulkheads and um the amenity space, so they do include that in the twenty percent, if I, my reading is correct, someone can correct me otherwise.
Okay, so we're gonna add. And this could, this is just a fenced-in area, it's not a building. Let me see here.
It's a recreation area, no?
Yeah, but it's exterior, this piece.
Didn't say that in the provision, in or out?
It's okay.
So now we're measuring
That entire gray kind of area.
Yeah, the fenced-in area that's outside.
Including the stairs and the bulkhead, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, the lounge chair area, the indoor area amenity, and the stairs and the bulkhead, got it?
You got nine sixty-eight, correct?
Yeah.
We're doing it twice here. Nine hundred and sixty-eight is everything.
Yeah, like about fourteen percent.
Thirteen, thirteen point six percent.
Thirteen point six percent.
So in that case
Below twenty. Still below twenty.
Yeah.
Any other um, any other provisions in there that we have to look at, Mr. Hazel?
The the height goes i- i- it's six inches above, but I mean, you know, that the enclosed area is about six inches above the maximum height, which is ten feet, but
We can make a 10.
I think, well, yeah, so.
Done. Um, anything else, uh, Mr. Hazel, regarding?
No, this is, this is, I think is demonstrated that it it does uh meet the standard.
Thank you, Commissioner Komi-Sanis, did you have a hand raised?
Uh, no, my my uh, my question was satisfied.
Great. Are there any questions for Mr. McDonough? Mr. McDonough, what's the, other than this building, what's the tallest building in that neighborhood?
You, you, um, it's a transforming neighborhood. I know there was an application approved just a few days ago.
Existing, existing.
Three, maybe three, four stories is, is the existing tallest building in the immediate neighborhood.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for, uh, the planner? Questions from the board for the planner? Commissioner Rivera?
What do you consider immediate? How close is that? Mr. Monk?
Well, I know Commissioner Rivera, um, just a couple of days ago. Uh, there was approval for a seven story building on Delancey that was planning board in fairness. It was about zero point three miles away, but it's, it's on Delancey. So when I'm talking immediate, I'm talking, I mean, neighborhood is generally by notice is, is two hundred feet. There's, there's no buildings that are five or six stories within. Have a five story building right next door.
No, I'm, I'm just asking because I know about two blocks away you have something almost this size. But, uh, alright, thank you, thank you. I just wanted to ask that question. How close are we looking at now? Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. McDonough. We try not to talk about the planning board here.
Sorry.
It's okay. Uh, are there any other questions for, uh, for the planner? Questions for the planner? Are there questions from the public for the planner or any other member of applicants team? If so, please identify yourself by using the raised hand feature at the bottom of your, your computer screen or your tele, uh, or your handheld device. If you're on a telephone, press star and I, I'd ask you to do so now. Counsel, do you have any other witnesses?
I do not.
Are there any members of the public here to make a statement at this time? If so, again, please use the raised hand feature or press star and I on the telephone. I'd ask you to do that now. I seen, I, I see no raised hands. Counsel?
I, with that, I'd like to just give a summation if that's fine.
Please.
Thank you. So I want to thank you for your time and definitely your indulgence this evening, uh, for, uh, working this through. I think the testimony you've heard today is, and what you've seen is that there's a building with ample landscaping, beautiful greenery. And certainly a better use than what's there today. Um, it will provide new housing for the residents. Um, and certainly will provide with IZO, which we did not mention, but is important to note that this will also provide and be consistent with the inclusionary zoning ordinance. The conditions that we've discussed on the record, um, will certainly mitigate any adverse consequences or issues that were raised by your professionals. We think the balance of the interest in granting the variances versus the impact lessened by these conditions, we certainly support. We think the height no longer is necessarily that one story is an issue with our notice. The variances, as noted by Mr. McDonough, can be granted without any substantial impact to the community and we submit that the testimony that you've heard this evening further supplements the application, satisfies that positive criteria by showing that there are reasons why this project is suited for this property, um, and that the relief that we are requesting can be granted. That there are reasons that exist that the balancing test lends itself towards, um, granting, uh, the approval to this project. And with, for those reasons, we submit and thank you again for your time and your indulgence.
Thank you. We're now in discussion. May I have discussion? Discussion from the board? Commissioner Comisanes?
Yeah, uh, this is a pretty cool building. Um, I, I like the fact that they just give us a square box with a, with, with windows in it. The angles, the creative greenery, the trees, uh, we, we don't often get to see projects that have the trees that they need. So I think the design i- is creative, uh, nicer than a lot of the other stuff that we get. You know, it's on the corner of a block that, according to the zoning plan, will be full of five story buildings. So, you know, to have a six story with a rooftop amenity space on a corner in a corridor that calls for five story buildings, I don't think is out of the norm. And, you know, I, I think a lot of good thinking went into this. I'm glad we corrected the situation about the commercial space because that was the one thing I really didn't like about it. I like the fact that there's an amenity space on the first floor also. Uh, I think it's a cool building. Uh, uh, I'd be in favor of it.
Thank you. Uh, any other com, uh, Commissioner Rivera?
I'd like to give small details about the area since, uh, I eat at Cafe Italia at the corner occasionally. I eat breakfast with my family every Saturdays. I'll mention on parking on that. Uh, every Saturday is about two blocks away, a little less than that. I go to the gym about two, two blocks away also forty-five times a week. So I'll touch on parking first for, for everyone here for the board to see what I understand and know. Sometimes I don't feel like parking inside the parking lot of the gym and I park it within half a block away. It's, it's because the gym parking lot is actually tight. And, uh, parking, uh, I I don't know how to say this, but I would agree with the studies we had here. Parking is not an issue apparently. I don't even know how. It also applies to me going to the bakery with my family every Saturday about two blocks away. Sometimes the parking lot is full and I still park it on the street very fast, very easy. Uh, so I guess we, we, we don't have too much of an issue of parking within Chestnut to South Street there. To add a little more to it, if you follow on Adam Street here, you'll find Adam Street is about fifteen blocks long or so. It, almost every single block actually has a, like a low, low mid-rise or something similar to that. Not a single one offers parking except all the way at the other end, which is a fairly new building. Not a single one, uh, uh, I believe, uh, not a single one would offer rooftop. Parking on the first floor, then, like I said, it's, it's not something that one hundred year old buildings have to offer, right? Now I mentioned the roof, uh, the structure on the roof because I see structures on top of these buildings that's four to five floors high and I see something above there. That's why I mentioned the, the elevator being top too, so. The, the, these, uh, structures are scattered through Adam Street though, uh, from the beginning to the end. This will actually be the first one closer to South Street. So the, I like the design of the building. It is very unique. It is actually very pretty. Considering the rooftop, I was about to ask if the applicant could increase it to twenty percent so that the, the community living in there could actually use it. A little more, but they got the first floor of space now, so that's very nice. Overall, this, this is nice. This is good. Overall, they did a good job. So I hope the other board members see what I understand about this area. And, uh, will be favored this application. That'll be all from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Other comments from the board? I, I, I would just note that we did not grant a tree variance here. And, uh, I hope Counsel remembers that. Once you go, if, if, if she goes to speak to Mr. Traficante.
I will remind him.
Because if a tree variance is required, he cannot grant that. Even though he thinks he may be able to, you'd have to come back to this board anyway. If there, if there are no further comments and I see no raised hands, um, may I have, may I have a motion, please? Commissioner Rivera?
Motion to approve ZBA dash twenty-four dash sixty-one located at three twenty-three dash three twenty-one, Adam Street, with all conditions.
We have a motion for approval with the conditions. Commissioner Rivera, may I have a second?
Thank you.
Was that Commissioner Comisanes?
Of course.
Uh, or Commissioner Hardisty, uh, call the roll, please.
Member Comisanes?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Rivera?
Yes.
Member Hardisty?
Yes.
Member Colbian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mumford?
Yes.
Sheriff Funt.
Yes, um, Counsel, I'm gonna ask if you would, uh, agree to conditional preliminary and conditional final side point approval. That condition would be that you meet all, all the, that you prove to the, um, staff, um, that you meet all conditions. If there is a problem, you certainly can come back to this board. Is that agreeable to you, Counsel?
Yes.
Have a motion for preliminary, for conditional preliminary and conditional final side point approval.
Move it.
Second, I think that was Commissioner Rivera.
Member Comisanes?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Rivera?
Yes.
Member Hardisty?
You're muted, Commissioner Hardisty.
Member Colbian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mumford?
Yes.
Sheriff Funt.
Yes, congratulations, your application.
Mine was, yes, too.
Yes, uh, and, um, and conditional side point approvals have been, um, granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night. Counsel, uh, Blata?
Yes.
Revolutions?
Yeah, we have five.
Number one?
So ZBA twenty-four dash thirty-two, forty-nine North Fifth Street.
Are there any proposed revisions or dissents? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Member Hardisty?
Yes.
Member Comisanes?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Rivera?
Yes.
Member Colbian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mumford?
Yes.
Sheriff Funt.
Yes, Counsel?
Uh, the next one, ZBA twenty-four dash seventy-one, twenty-five, twenty-seven, Roseville Avenue.
Are there any proposed revisions or dissents? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Member Hardisty?
Yes.
Member Comisanes?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Rivera?
Yes.
Member Colbian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mumford?
Yes.
Sheriff Funt.
Yes, Counsel?
Next is ZBA twenty-four dash thirty-three, one eighty-four, one eighty-eight, East Kenny Street.
Are there any proposed revisions or dissents? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Member Hardisty?
Yes.
Member Comisanes?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Rivera?
Yes.
Member Colbian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mumford?
Yes.
Sheriff Funt.
Yes, Counsel?
Uh, ZBA twenty-four dash twenty-nine, two fifty-nine, two sixty-one, Littleton Ave.
Are there any proposed revisions or dissents? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Member Hardisty?
Yes.
Member Comisanes?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Rivera?
Yes.
Member Colbian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mumford?
Yes.
Sheriff Funt.
Yes, Counsel?
Last is ZBA twenty-four dash sixty-seven, one fifty-eight, one sixty, Oliver Street.
Proposed revisions or dissents? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Member Hardisty?
Yes.
Member Comisanes?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Rivera?
Yes.
Member Colbian?
Yeah, uh, yes, sorry.
Vice Chair Mumford? Sheriff Funt.
Yes, we are adopting the minutes of April third. Are there any proposed revisions? Or corrections? That would be a revision, right? Call the roll, please.
Member Hardisty?
Yes.
Member Comisanes?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Rivera?
Yes.
Member Colbian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mumford?
Yes. Did you hear me? Yes.
Sheriff Funt.
Yes, uh, the minutes of April seventeenth, are there any proposed revisions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Member Hardisty?
Yes.
Member Comisanes?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Rivera?
Yes.
Member Colbian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mumford?
Yes.
Sheriff Funt.
Yes, uh, Counsel, any matters for which we have to convene into executive session?
No.
Counsel, I'm very impressed that you've stayed on with the tie all day up, up until nine sixteen PM. There's no further matters on agenda. Uh, uh, are we, when is our next meeting, miss?
Next week.
When?
Killing us softly.
Five in a row. We're at three.
How many applications on next week?
Four.
Yeah, well, it's, we did three. It's nine seventeen. Uh, Ms. Juma, are you still with us?
Uh, she's gone, it looks like.
What is, uh, what has happened to the world? Juma is gone and no longer in the office. The world is changing. There's no further matters on the agenda. A motion to adjourn is always in order. Non-debatable. Have a motion to adjourn.
Move it.
All in favor, say aye.